So I think I'm going to follow the 10-minute rule. And then we'll begin.
Dana's going to print out the election results?
Yeah, that's good because I can't, I keep clicking on my phone, I can't get them, I don't, I don't know what the connection is here.
Right. Pour and spotting?
I've got the write-ins. I got, I could pull up the write-ins. Okay, if I could have everyone who's already checked in, if they could go to take a seat, we really appreciate it, and I call the meeting to order. Yeah, I'll just scroll in. Again, if you've checked in, if you could go to a seat, and we'll try to get us rolling here. Okay. Everyone, attention to the habits of the Town of Chester, County of Rockingham, State of New Hampshire, qualified to vote in town affairs. You're hereby notified to meet at the Chester Municipal Offices in said Chester on Tuesday, the fourteenth day of May, 2024, at 7:00 a.m. to act on Articles 1 through 8. The polls will close at 7 o'clock P.M. After the ballots are counted, the meeting will continue on Thursday, today, the fifteenth day of May, 2024, at 6 o'clock P.M. in the Chester Multipurpose Room. Articles 9 through 41 will be taken up at that time. If I could have us all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. Oh, this is great. This is a good turnout. I love that. And, and it's a nice day outside. So I'd like to welcome you, I usually start off the meetings by kind of just saying how much I appreciate the participation in the grassroots of politics, which are town meetings. This is where the real law is made. The real law. And I appreciate seeing all these faces here, and all those that are joining us via television. That's great, too. Thank you. So the rules are pretty straightforward. My goal is to make sure that everyone hears what the warrant article is and has a chance to provide their view, and we encourage diversity in views. So, but because we have so many warrant articles today, I'm going to probably entertain a motion somewhere online if someone wants to make it to, to limit discussion on these articles for each individual to getting up twice. That might make somebody upset, but it doesn't apply to people who petitioned the warrant articles or who are explaining the warrant articles that have been placed on by town officials. But I'd like to limit it to two times at bat, and that will help us get through it. So think of everything you're going to say each of those two times and try to get that out there. Please direct all of your remarks to me, not because I'm very important, but simply because we don't want discussions going between parties, even if they disagree or they're having a, even if they agree and support each other. We want that to be directed to the moderator so the town can all hear it without people having their own private discussion. Please, I know we're all very courteous in these meetings, and I really appreciate it. One of the things of being courteous, too, is that if people are in the middle of coming up to make a comment, or they're in the middle of making a comment, please don't stand up and call the question. It's disruptive, and I can't act on it anyway. One thing that also is not highly understood, but if someone brings up a procedural matter, I have to deal with that before I could deal with anything else. So if you're waiting to hear more about the part article and any amendment to it, I can't really discuss it till I've dealt with a procedural motion. Please state your name, and please, you don't have to give the exact address, you can give the road if you want, and where you're located in Chester. But if I call for a red vote, I've been asked that you raise your red ticket that shows that you're registered, because we really only want registered voters to vote, and we only really want registered voters to discuss. Unless us as a body would like someone who's not a registered voter to discuss a warrant article. Yep. Yeah, I'm going to ask, okay, so we already have a motion. Dan, thank you. It's been moved that we limit participation to non-petitioners or non-source of warrant articles to two times up at bat. All those, is that, anyone second that for me? It's been seconded. All of those in favor, please signify. Great, excellent. Okay. The other thing, if you'd be kind enough, I'll make this motion myself, is that you relieve me of the responsibility of reading the article a second time before we vote on it. Yep. Pardon me? Oh, sorry. All, thank you very much. All those oppose? Okay, well, unfortunately, that was a good move, but it didn't work, I guess. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that would leave me of the responsibility of having to read the article a second time when we vote upon it. All those, anyone second that for me? Thank you. All those in favor of that? Any opposed? Thanks. Okay. It seems like I'm always doing this the first time, doesn't it? Okay. So we're going to go through the articles, and we're going to have a break approximately halfway through, so everyone can rest and walk around, whatever. And we have a couple articles that I will identify that require the polls to be open. So Article 13 is an article that we have to keep open for an hour's worth of time. When we get to that article, I'll let the people in TV world know that if they want to come over and vote on that, they got to get over within that hour. They don't get any extra time because they have travel time. So without any further ado, we will start. Okay. So the first thing I am going to do is I am going to read the results of the election. And then I'm going to invite David to come up and read the results of the school election. So here are the results of the election. For those of you that came to the election and voted, thank you very much, and I will indicate the position and the votes and the candidates. So for the Board of Selectmen, Stephen D'Angelo received 236 votes. Stephen, Steph Landau received 350 votes, and David Levita received 297 votes. I have to choose two of those, and so I declare Steph Landau and David Levita elected. Congratulations, gentlemen. Town Moderator, there was only one candidate that ran, David L. Scott, not related to me. Maybe, maybe related to me way down the line, but 466 votes, and I declare David L. Scott your new town moderator. Congratulations, David. And I mean that. Okay. Supervisor of the checklist, it was, there was no listed candidate, but Mary Beth DeToro received 72 write-in votes, and I talked to her, and she's accepted, so I declare Mary Beth DeToro elected. Budget Committee. Okay, this is for two people. Ronald J. McKinnon Jr. received 350 votes, and Charlotte A. Lister received 333 votes. I declare Ronald J. McKinnon Jr. and Charlotte A. Lister elected. I forgot to say, you can stand if you'd like, if your name's called. Budget Committee. Okay, just one. Michael A. Wyder received 151 votes, and Beth Swanson received 350 votes. I declare Beth Swanson elected. Trustee of the trust funds, no candidate was, ran, but Richie, Richard, Rich, that's not Richard, this is Richie LeBlanc, received 34 votes, and my understanding is he's accepted that, so I declare Richie LeBlanc elected. Welcome Towns and Trust. James T. Brady got 418 votes. Jim, I declare James T. Brady elected. Library trustee. Beth Swanson and Mary DeToro were listed as candidates. We choose two, and Beth Swanson received 416 votes, and Mary DeToro received 353 votes. I declare Beth Swanson and Mary E. DeToro elected. Okay. So Great Hill Cemetery trustee. Mark E. Cuddy received 418 votes, and I declare Mark E. Cuddy elected. Okay. Village Cemetery trustee, let me just pull that up. So for that, the most votes were obtained by Liz Lakkos, were 164 votes. I have not been able to get in touch with her, so I can't declare, I don't know if she's here today, if she is, she could stand up and tell me yes or no, but it doesn't appear she's here. So I cannot declare anyone elected for that, but there are other people that receive votes, and if you'd like to know what they were for write-in votes for other persons, you're welcome to come up and talk to me at the break time. So I can't declare anyone elected until I talk to her, but Liz did receive the most write-in votes. Okay. So let me go through these. So these are the planning, sure, thank you. So these are the, the Planning Board amendments. So Article 2. Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment 1 to the Town Zoning Ordinance as proposed by the Planning Board? There are 341 yeses and 142 noes. That article passes. Okay. Next article. It's Amendment Number 2. Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 2 to the Town Zoning Ordinance as proposed by the Planning Board? And they wanted to amend Article 4.4 signs. And I'm not going to read the purpose on any of these things, but there were 273 yeses and 265, sorry, 215 noes. So that article passes. Okay. And then there was Amendment Number 3 to the zoning ordinance proposed by the Planning Board, and that amendment is to Article 4.6 Recreation Vehicles. There were 293 yeses and 183 noes. That article passes. Okay, next one. Are you in favor of adoption of Amendment Number 4 to the Town Zoning Ordinance as proposed by the Planning Board? And that is an amendment to Article 5.3, point, 5.3, front dish. And there were 311 yeses, 169 noes. That amendment passes. Next amendment, number 5. Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 5 to the Town Zoning Ordinance as proposed by the Planning Board? And that amends Article 7B. Fair Market, what's that word? Rental Housing for a fair subdivision? Okay. And that, is that, does that stand for farmer? FMR? Oh, Fair Market, sorry. Okay. There are 281 yeses and 209 noes. That amendment passes. Next amendment, number 6. Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment 6 to the Town Zoning Ordinance as proposed by the Planning Board? That's amending Article 9.2, approval process for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and there were 319 yeses, 169 noes. That amendment passes. Last one, Amendment Number 7. Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number 7 to the Town Zoning Ordinance as proposed by the Planning Board? Amend Table 1, Table of Dimensional and Area Requirements. There were 290 yeses and 182 noes. That one passes. Is there? That's probably more information we want to give at the end of the meeting, if you want to educate them regarding those amendments. Yep, you can do that when we take up more business. But not now. I invite David, if he's here, oh, there he is, to give us the school results. There was one open school board position. Saul Schreiber received 203 votes. Joseph DiNino received 323 votes. I declare Joseph DiNino the winner. I also declare the annual school district meeting closed. See how much better he is? Okay. We are going to go on to Article 9. Here we are, yep, sorry, thank you for that. Okay. Article 9. I'm going to read that. Repurposing of Mosquito Abatement ETF. Shall the town rename and repurpose the mosquito abatement expendable trust fund established in 2007 to the pest control expendable trust fund under the provisions of NHRSA 3516 in order to fund the control of all undesirable pests, such as, but not limited to, mosquitoes, ticks, rodents, et cetera? Further, for the Selectman, Select Board to continue as agents to expand. Should this article pass, line 01-4194-1-4390 dot 15, comma, pest control in the operating budget will be reduced to $1. This requires a two-thirds majority vote. So we will actually have, unfortunately, I hate to do this, we'll have to have a hand vote, and you have to hold them up each time, and then we'll just see how many people have registered, and then we'll figure out whether it's two-thirds. So will someone bring that article on the table? Also moved, seconded? Okay. Any discussion on that article?
David?
Sure, okay, go ahead.
This is Dana Theokis on the Select Board. And so as you are all aware, we have a substantial book of business in front of us tonight. This fund was created in 2007, and in response to the eastern equine encephalitis that was rampant in the area and a very dangerous virus, but it has never been utilized. And so this fund is a current balance of $23,371.47 as of March 31st, where our annual pest operating budget ranges from typically $7,500 to $10,000. So this will give us several years of complete coverage, or at least supplemental coverage for our budget, or operating budget. This article was supported unanimously by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee.
Okay, any further discussion? I'm actually surprised that someone didn't really kind of wonder when it says "all undesirable pests," and it has "et cetera" down there, that it might be referring to something other than people or animals, but. So I don't have to read that again? It doesn't appear there's any further discussion? All in favor of Article 9? Please signify. Great, keep your hands raised. Okay. I'm pretty sure we have two-thirds. So any, you can lower them. Any that are not in favor? Okay. Article 9 passes. Okay. Article 10. Legal Costs ETF. Shall the town add the Select Board as age to expand the legal costs expendable trust fund and remove the cap of $30,000? Should this article pass, line 01-4153-1-43, sorry, dot 01, legal expense in the operating budget will be reduced by $10,000. Anyone want to move that to the floor? Seconded? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 10?
Basically, what we've done is we're trying to lower the cost in the budget and create this account so that when expenses come up, and the town does have a number of legal expenses, some of them are for being sued, and some of them are for the purpose of handling some of our legal documents. But, well, if we go and we put this into this revenue fund or trust fund, we don't have to worry about raising it each year. And I use as an example, very much so, the welfare that we have put together over the years. If you look in your budget book, okay, welfare is down to $8. At one time, when we first started years ago, okay, it was up in the thousands of dollars because we had to put money aside, were required by the RSAs, the revised statutes annotated. And so what the thought is with this is the same way. If we need, we have a savings account, so we don't have to worry. Eventually, what I would like to see is that we take $10,000 off each year. Eventually, what I would like to see is that we take $10,000 off each year, and then that line in the budget will eventually be down to $1. And the reason we have to carry $1 is in order to be able to expend any funds. We have been sued a number of times. We have legal costs that come about, and we hire a town attorney for a reason. We have a law firm that represents... In fact, we have two or three law firms that represent us for various things. So, any other questions?
Any other discussion on Article... That Article Ten? There appearing to be none. All those in favor of Article Ten as read previously, please signify.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article Ten passes. Article Eleven. Repurposing of 300 Anniversary Celebrations CRF. Shall the town rename and repurpose the 300th Anniversary Celebration Capital Reserve Fund established in 2013 to the Celebrations Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions of NHRS A 3516 in order to continue accruing funds for future significant anniversaries and other celebrations? Further, for the Select Board to continue as agents to expend. Again, this requires a two-thirds majority vote. Will someone move that to the floor?
So move.
Seconded? Okay. Any discussion on Article Eleven?
It basically is the same thing. Okay? We raise some funds for the 300th anniversary. In your budget, again, we raise funds for certain things, and what we're trying to do is as any of us would do at our own home. We have some money that's left over from the 300th anniversary, and it wasn't enough to go ahead and justify to say, "Wow, we're going to lower taxes," because it probably... In this particular case, it might have lowered your taxes by three-quarters of a penny. So what we're trying to do is invest these. Right now, we've got four-and-a-half or five percent money returned. Okay? You're going to see one in the next one that we've never used, and I'm sorry, Mike, I'm moving ahead, but they're all the same thing. In the next one, we put $10,000 away over 15 years ago, I believe it was. We wound up never spending it, and the $10,000 was, I believe, a gift at the time when I was here. And so, by having that $10,000 in and by the market being what it is, we're up almost better than $13,000. And that's the purpose of these articles.
Okay. Yes? Please state your name. Chris?
Chris Haddock, Chester Street. I just have a quick question for the Board. Who determines what's an expense for an anniversary celebration?
It's going to be determined not only by the Board, but by the town as well, or the various committees.
Okay. The only reason I ask is that when it was just the 300th anniversary fund, $10,000 was taken out of it to paint Stevens Hall, and no one ever consulted the anniversary committee about it. And actually, technically, that Board never voted on it. So, I just want to point that out.
$10,000 was taken from Stevens Hall?
Okay. Any further discussion on Article Eleven? Okay. There appearing to be none? All those in favor of Article Eleven, please indicate.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. Article Eleven passes. It's clearly a two-thirds majority. Okay. Article Twelve. And incidentally, when I call these votes, especially if it's a two-thirds vote, and you think that I've got it all wrong, you can challenge the moderator, and then you can force a more careful examination of the vote. Okay? So it will not offend me in any way, and you're welcome to do it. Okay. Article Twelve. Repurposing of Commemorative Monument CRF. Shall the town repurpose the Commemorative Monument Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions of NHRS A 3516 in order to not only fund the creation of new commemorative monuments, but also to fund the repair of existing monuments, all associated costs? Further, for the Select Board to continue as agents to expend. Again, a two-thirds majority vote is required. Will someone move that to the floor?
So move.
Seconded? Thank you. It's been moved to seconded. Any discussion on Article Twelve? I think you kind of stepped your address, David. Go ahead.
I spoke to it before. It's the same thing. As I said, we received a gift 15 years ago, if so, if not more, and of $10,000. It's gained, I think, I believe about $3,000 or more. I don't know what it is effective actually today, but I know it was in that range. And what we would like to do is use it, and there are some monuments, both in the cemeteries, as well as the possibility of damage to the central, the stone man in the center in the town common. So that's the whole idea, to have funds to repair this. So we don't need to ask it in the budget.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Twelve? There appearing to be none? All those in favor of Article Twelve as read, please indicate. Thank you. Any opposed? Okay. I believe the ayes have it by two-thirds, clearly. So Article Twelve passes. Okay. Now we're on Article Thirteen. And this is a petition article, so you'll find that I'm always this way consistently over 35 years, that I like whoever petitions for an article if they're brave enough to talk about it. But anyway. The Petition Warn Article. Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 40, colon thirteen, known as SB Two, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the legislative body of the Town of Chester on the second Tuesday of May? And this requires a three-fifths majority vote by ballot required. So we're going to have a written ballot. And the ballot box has to remain open for an hour. Will someone please move this to the floor? Okay. And seconded? Thank you. So it's been moved to seconded. Any discussion on Article Thirteen? And if the petitioner... I don't know who petitioned for this, but whoever did, it'd be great if they would speak to it, but whoever wants to speak to it can come up to the podium or over to the microphone there. Come on up here.
No, I'm not. I'm whoever wants to speak.
Jane. Come right up here, Jane.
Lynn Rockwell, Chester Street. I am vehemently opposed to this. I think that SB Two gives people the opportunity to vote on articles on the Tuesday without any further information. Yes, more people show up to vote, but without this discussion, this open, honest discussion among our neighbors, I think we lose a great deal. So I am very opposed to this. Thank you.
Scott McDonald, Hiltz Farm Road. I am adamantly for this. This is a voting protections issue. It's a civil rights issue. It's to protect our voting rights for all those people of the town. We are a 21st century town, and if we hang on to this solely for our important issues like our budgets and warrant issues that are going to impact our taxes... I noticed the tax rate's going up by 10%. We have a reassessment coming up. And in history, those have been 100% years. So going by the current market, simple math, my taxes are going to double. And for the people that are out working a night shift tonight, whether they be stocking shelves for your peanut butter on the shelf tomorrow, being in an ER, waiting for somebody to do something silly and get cut, firefighters... In fact, we have, if I've read it right on Facebook, we actually have a soldier from our town serving tonight that he can't have his vote count, and he is willing to write a blank check for all of us to protect our very rights that we're willing to take away from him by voting no. And I'm speaking to you as my viewpoint as a veteran. I did 22 years in the Air Force, retired as a Lieutenant Colonel, and my oath, my commission are still in effect. I'm in the retired reserve. I was not discharged. So, I think any vet in this room would stand to say, actually, personally, a no vote is a slap in our face because we wrote that blank check to protect the very right that this would take away from people that physically can't be here. I'm voting yes, and for the sake of true democracy, join me.
Greg Bobisch, 124 Smith Road. Also a veteran, also in support of SB Two. There's really good arguments in opposition to SB Two. We've all read them online today and in the last week. I'm not going to review all of that. But one thing to think about is there are about 500 people voted in Tuesday's election. Today, there's not 500 people here. All those 500 people should have been able to vote on their own money, their own tax I would support continuing town meeting, but it's just, it's time to move on, I think. The Select Board can't raise taxes or spend money if they don't have a quorum. There's no quorum involved in town meeting. There's a very small percentage of people that show up to town meeting. I've seen as few as 40 people at a school meeting. I've seen maybe less than 100 that have shown up for town meeting. It's just too small of a representation to be raising taxes on your neighbor who might not be here tonight. Thank you.
Charlotte Lister, Fremont Road. I want you to vote no in this article. We had SB Two for the school, and we repealed it. That's because it didn't work. It didn't work because very few people showed up at deliberative session. The SB Two will break the town meeting into a deliberative session, which would be like the debate part of this meeting, where people learn from other people. And it just... People simply do not show up for it. For the few hours every day, every year, on one day, this is a legislature, and this is a full... One of the fullest, purest forms of democracy in the world. When we're here, we can amend articles, drop them altogether. SB Two takes legislation power away from the people, but it wasn't supposed to, but it does because people don't show up to understand and learn about what is on the ballot. Yes, you can go on town, but when few people show up and you look at the debate, the debate with two people, 20 people, is much less than a debate with 200. There are less fewer ideas that are brought forth. There are people who come up here, and they come up with ideas of things I hadn't thought of. I've had... I've changed my vote sometimes with what I learned at town meeting. And you also run a risk with only a few people showing up. The people show up, mostly you have an agenda, and it may not be your agenda. This is less likely to happen when there are more people show up. I think this allows the taxpayers, those who show up, and many people could be here and don't wish to be, which is fine, but the separation of deliberation in the voting means many people do not consider deliberation to be important, and it is just as important as the voting. And I want those of you who vote yes for an SB Two, if it passes, to make the commitment to show up at deliberative session so that if it comes, it will try to make it work. Because my biggest objection is that it... Is that it... Yeah, it... My phone's going off. The biggest objection is that we don't have the debate that we need. Thank you.
I'm going to recognize Jane Sharon.
Did you just say that intro? That's mine. Did you hear it? Oh, did you?
My name is Jane Sharon. I've lived here for over 50 years, and I live on Interstate North Fond Road. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I wanted to take a little bit of time to talk to you about SB Two. Now, first of all, I appreciate the intent of the sponsors, and every one of us in this building is counting our dollars because things, as you are all well aware, are tight. I tend to be a traditional individual, and I truly believe in the school district and town meeting process. I honestly am so proud of everybody that is here tonight. This is invigorating to see this kind of a turnout. It's important. We tend to forget how important it actually is. You are the legislative body of this town, and to have a few people making decisions, I'm not for that at all. So it's critically important to me you're here tonight. The question I get in return is... I was at the State House. I was just electman for about 10 years. I was your state representative for 10 years, and I found it quite an interesting position. When I was at the State House, I asked so many people, "What do you think of SB Two?" There wasn't a good response because I was told that once you voted in, you can't vote it out. I don't like something like that. I'm telling you, the most important thing that you can do is to vote against getting SB Two in here. We are all traditionalists, at least we should be. I like history. We've been having town meetings for years, and this is the town meeting is about us. Personal communication, and none of this foolishness with a letter here and a letter there, petition here, petition there. A little bit about SB Two. It's been around since 1996 and allows residents to vote on town and school district warrants. At the polls, instead of a town and school district meeting, my understanding is there is about 60 of New Hampshire's 221 towns that have adopted SB Two. And only a handful have reverted back. In the nutshell, and I was told, you can't get it out. Provides a deliberative session where residents have the opportunity to discuss and question and amend these articles. But the attendance at that deliberative session is not good. So that tells you, there's the involvement. No involvement. Now, what bothers me is that it seems this form of town meeting hasn't created an attendance either, like I said. The downside is that folks who go to the ballot box and vote on each article, many from my understanding are not familiar with the reasoning behind the request for money, nor in some cases do they care. They do not want their taxes up, and I understand that. Folks go in and vote no, period, without any justification. Now personally, I prefer to see and hear open debate, and that's what we're all about, and you're experiencing that tonight. And it's a great thing to see and experience. The school board members, the superintendent, budget committee, and selectmen defend up and down, and never, ever do you ever want to lose your voice. And I'm telling you, you're going to lose it. Whether we like it or not, there are some expenditures we have to provide. There are a lot of fixed costs that we have no control over. But maybe there are some items that can be purchased over a period of time, and we started doing that years ago. Instead of, let's say, as an example, buying a million-dollar fire truck, one hit, we've gone into the capital reserves. Incrementally, we were saving money to buy the truck, and the impact is not this major expenditure that we end up with. The legislative body of our town is us, and we have a responsibility to preserve that which has brought us this far. And I believe that SB Two is a lazy way to vote. How many times have we heard, "I'm too busy. I don't have time"? SB Two's not the answer. The answer is for each and every one of us to do the utmost best in listening, reading, participating in one way or another in the process. This is our town, and no one else's, and it is we who need the... To be accountable. This is our town, and no one else's, and it is we who need to be accountable for the direction that we take. I ask that you do not support SB2 when the time comes, as is now. Stand fast and continue the tradition. Now, as a highlight to this, what I just read to you, I read to this town meeting 16 years ago, exactly word for word. 16 years ago, I spoke to you, and it was defeated. March 19th, 2008. I'm just saying, pay attention to the whole issue. You never want to lose your voice. SB2 is, "I don't want it, I'm not going to vote for it." That's it, gone. You need to hear the reasons why appropriations are asked for. Don't make sense, then you vote against them. I am not in favor of SB2. I really don't want to see us go down that trail. And as I said, every, it must have been about 30 state reps when I was up there that I polled, and out of there wasn't one that told me that it did any good. It was the worst thing they ever did, but the problem is, is once you put it in, you can't get it out. So I ask you to vote no on SB2. Thanks.
Chris Haddock, Chester Street. Thank you, Gene, for reminding us. We've tried this before. About 19 years ago, it was voted in for the school, and it was an abject failure at the time. I was on the Budget Committee during those years. What happens is the school prepares the budget like they normally do, and then they give you a default budget. Now, the RSAs tell you what's supposed to be in the default budget, but a lot of that is open to interpretation. The interesting thing is, all the time during those SB2 years, the default budget was always higher than the regular budget, and the Budget Committee cannot question or do anything about that. That is prepared solely by the school board. You can file a complaint, however, DRA won't even look at a default budget. So I guarantee you, if you vote SB2 here, you're going to see the budget like we're going through tonight, and you're going to see a default budget that's slightly higher than that. And what you're going to give up is the ability to come in here and discuss that first budget that you see and to make amendments. You're only going to see it at the ballot box, and you're going to have to choose A or B. You're not going to be able to change it yourselves. Thank you. I'm opposed to it, by the way.
Keep it coming.
Hi, I'm Beth Swanson, 108 Chester Street. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you to Gene and to Chris for saying those things. Those were a lot of the things that I was going to bring up. But I'd also like to speak to the first gentleman, first two gentlemen who were talking. Having had my kids young in this town, I understand the impact of people who have difficulty getting here to the meeting and wanting to have a say in what happens in our town and with our taxes, and the challenges it brings if you have to work out of town, if you're deployed, or if you just can't get here because your kids have a bedtime. However, SB2, from the research that I've done, doesn't necessarily limit the process to one vote that you do between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. It actually separates out what we're doing here today. Today, we are doing a combined, basically a deliberative session and a voting session. So as each article comes up, we can deliberate. We can ask questions of the people who brought those articles forward. We can make changes. Things like at the school board meeting, there were a number of individuals who stepped up and said, "You know what? I don't agree with the budget that the school board and the budget committee both agreed on. They felt that it was still too high." In that process, they were able to step forward, explain why they wanted a decrease, get that amendment passed, and then get the entire budget decreased, which saved a significant amount of money for the taxpayers. If we go to SB2, it separates that out. There's a separate deliberative session two weeks before. It doesn't negate a deliberative session, it just pushes it back into two different segments. So that means that you still have to show up in person to get your questions answered and to make requests for the numbers to change if you think that your taxes are too high or you think that the money isn't being spent the way that you feel is right. Then, as Chris pointed out, if the, if you vote no on articles, that's it. There's no discussion, that's where it stands. The default budgets do tend to be a little bit higher. At this point, if we pass the SB2, it leaves it to the Board of Selectmen to determine what that default budget's going to be. Based on the information that I got from the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration, we would have to do a separate vote in the following year to get it so that the default budget is not created by the Board of Selectmen, but yet would be created by the Budget Committee. So you have to think about that. Next year, if SB2 passes this year, the budget has a very good chance of being higher than what the Budget Committee has worked very hard to go line by line and bring those numbers down. This is why we vote in people for the Budget Committee, to be that extra line of oversight. This is why we let you, the legislative body, come in and be the oversight for that group and make sure that you also agree to everything that your money is being spent on. So I encourage you, although it seems wonderful, and I love the idea of the vote and having to be, being able to come from 7 to 7, I very much encourage you to understand that it doesn't get rid of this deliberation, it just separates it out. And I encourage you to vote no on SB2 and continue being part of the legislative body in person at town meeting.
Mike Weider, 80 Red Squirrel Lane. I'm going to go back a little history. 26 years ago or 25 years ago, I sat in my first meeting in this room to have a little debate with Colonel Benton, 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 Colonel Benton, on what our rights are in this community and why it's important for us to be at these meetings and voice our opinions and to understand what you're doing and voting on. So I'm going to go through some bullet points. You know, I think we lose some things. In 2020, we voted it out of the school. Four years later, we're looking to vote it into the town. Sorry, sorry. I'm usually pretty loud. So, loss of residential interest and poor attendance. This is the first thing. The lack of final voting power in deliberative sessions are reduced to this important meeting. You're going to be doing it at a deliberative session, which a few people can make a decision, a very few people can make a decision. Loss of control over the budget. You, the voters, are going to lose control over the budget. Because deliberative session can be run by a small group of people with a special interest, you will have no choice or no debate or no discussion on what you're voting on. You're just going to vote on a ballot. Long dragged out process. So the town with an SB2 has to deliberate, have a deliberative session, advertise, post it. Mailers have to go out, a whole bunch of things, which cost the town a little more money. For what I saw when it was a public hearing related to the SB2, a very low turnout. Special interest groups can overwhelm deliberative session and have the budget the way they want it, not the way the town wants it, or vote things in or get things into the budget that we, the town, may not want. And last, voters who adopt this usually do not like it. Towns that I've dealt with, I was a selectman for nine years, on the Budget Committee for 20 something years. I spent a lot of times in meetings in Concord, at a lot of different workshops. The towns that have SB2 do not like SB2. It takes a little effort on all our behalf to go to meetings. Yes, it's a little cumbersome. We have to change our schedules. We have to make that commitment and get out to our meetings, but it's our choices to do that. I think it's a cop out, truly is, that we're going to vote on a piece of paper because I got to use work as an excuse, I got a family, I got to do this, I got to do that. It's one day a year. One day a year. We've had it on Saturdays, we've had it on Thursday nights, we've tried to accommodate the public, but at the end of the day, your rights and the importance of your voting is tonight's meeting. You need to make sure that you vote no on SB2, keep the town the way it is, keep the town meeting the way it is, participate in these meetings, participate in the budget process, ask the important questions, stand up here and get clarity from the Board of Selectmen, from the Budget Committee, so you understand what you're really voting for. Putting it on a piece of paper with some words without a clear explanation is not going to help this town, and what you're going to see is the budget go up. Towns that have SB2 see increased budgets year after year, and the town cannot control those budgets at that point. That's, well, thank you.
Andrew Haddock, Chester Street. I have served this town in various capacities for 30 years now, and I've done, every year, I've tried to keep myself educated on what is good for towns and what is bad for towns and how things go. And SB2 is one of the things I've followed, and I actually did some research online. I'm currently a commissioner on the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission that represent, and I represent Chester there. And earlier this year, they had mined the demographic information that they had gotten back from the 2020 census. So it took like a year and a half to receive it and working through it, and they went through the review, and one thing that stuck out, Chester of the 14 communities in the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, one thing that I was especially proud of was that Chester has the highest percentage of veterans of any of those, of the 14 towns and cities in there. And that makes it all the sadder because this proposal to do away with the traditional town meeting format, which there are international studies that log this as the purest form of democracy on the planet. I've lived in other states temporarily where it's all done by commissioners, behind closed doors, all this stuff is, you have no say, you can fill an auditorium with angry people, they don't care. But here, your vote is worth something. You go online and read about the many articles on the results of SB2, you're going to see that there's a number of fatal flaws in SB2. I was looking at articles in the Concord Monitor, the Keen Sentinel, Nashua Telegraph, and others, and the biggest fatal flaw is under SB2, most people really don't understand what they're voting on, and the reasons for that have been elaborated enough this evening already. But it has to do with not bothering to attend and not bothering to educate oneself. The second flaw is that very few people who attend the deliberative sessions have undue influence over the process. There's actually an example here in New Hampshire. People got so disheartened by the SB2 process that practically nobody attended the deliberative session, and a number of curmudgeons actually dropped the dollar amount for every single article to $0. There was no funding for fire, police, ambulance, anything. I mean, it was just nonsensical. The sad fact is that SB2 empowers the tyranny of the uninformed voter. It really is sad. In Epsom, they received a $250,000 grant, but they voted it down because they didn't understand what they were voting on because they hadn't bothered to get informed. Fatal flaw number three, and this has to do with the default budgets that can be similar to or even higher than the budgets of voting, and you've also all heard this. You know, unfortunately, the theory and the actual realities of SB2 in implementation, they're just miles apart. It doesn't work. When I last did this research, 71 towns had adopted SB2, and there had been at least 70 attempts to vote it out. In Chester, we have an elected, experienced, and very effective Budget Committee. You voters get to pick this Budget Committee. I can corroborate the Budget Committee's effectiveness by their lack of popularity with the selectmen and, and many department heads. You know, the committee reviews help trim out the fat of the budgets, and they continually fight for full public disclosure. And this system has worked very well. So please don't give up the most democratic system for something that promises the illusion of cutting taxes and convenience. Anybody who's been involved in this process long enough understands you end up spending less money in the end if you're financially proactive, and that's one thing that SB2 absolutely shatters. You know, if you're financially reactive, it's always going to cost more. My analogy is the homeowner who ignores fixing the roof until the sheetrock is falling in on him. You know, now he's got a lot more to fix than just some shingles. Please don't drink the SB2 Kool-Aid and then learn to your great dismay that your taxes are actually going to end up higher than they were. And just keep in mind that once it's in, it's very, it's almost impossible to rescind for the same fatal flaws that keep it from working in the first place. Thank you, and please vote no.
Dave Anderson, Jennifer Drive. I can tell people are getting antsy, so I'm going to make this short. Couple of people said earlier in favor of this, that it would limit democracy. I don't agree with that. And the red herring of people on deployment being able to vote, they're not going to be able to vote. It's not going to happen. And I urge you to vote no. Oh, by the way, I'm a twice wounded Vietnam combat veteran.
I would, but someone just stood up and talked, so I'm not going to call the question because I would be hypocritical. Go ahead.
Matt Stover, Chester Street. There are, according to our town report, about 3,986 people who are registered to vote in Chester, New Hampshire. We just had a municipal election, and about 15% of those people voted. So this is a town where it's always a minority who votes on the issues, whether it's an election or whether we come to a town meeting. And what the other 85% of the people in town are saying is that they trust the people they elect to the Select Board and to the Budget Committee and the people who choose to make the time because it's important to come to this meeting, to represent them. So we're a body of people that's representing, I hope, everybody in town, because I think as a community, we care about each other. And when we can get together, as many other people have said, in a deliberative body and be an informed electorate on behalf of not just ourselves, but everyone in town, we will get the best results for the people in Chester. And for those who think it's better to have an SB2 town because they think the budget is going to go down and the taxes are going to go down, I think, as a number of speakers have already said, that is not the pattern in SB2 towns. Your taxes ratchet up and ratchet up and ratchet up every year. So if you really are doing, saying you want this because you want your taxes to be lower, what you need to focus on is who's representing us in Concord. And look at the fact that over the last eight years, we all pay property taxes. Has Concord ever done things to significantly cut our property taxes? No, but they have cut taxes by in the neighborhood of $1 billion by reducing the tax rates for the largest corporations and the most wealthy families in this state. And if we want our local taxes to go down, that's where we need to focus. SB2 is not going to lower our property taxes.
Okay, the question has been called. All of you in favor of calling the questions, please signify.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, question's been called, and I am going to, I'm going to now look at my, so you have until 8:10 to vote on this article. You're for or against, and we'll take people, I think we'll start at the front rows and orderly move to the back to go to the ballot box. And then as soon as you, I hate to do this to you, but as soon as you've cast your ballot, please return to your seat because otherwise, I know we want to talk to people, but we won't get through this. And for the side, like the first portion can go, and then the middle portion, and then the end portion. the end portion as they see it filter out to the back. So I'm going to wait for a few minutes here. I'm going to elect. Yeah, yeah. I'm just going to do it when everyone's sitting down. Yeah, someone else came up and told me. Does someone have the oath of office things? Do they want to spare people in at lunchtime? I don't have it with me. I have lost it. Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
We have a couple of articles coming up, 37, 38, 39, that are all related to potentially We have line item on here, two new ballot counting machines. I'd like to make a motion that we take up voting on this article until after those articles, after 37, 38, or so after 39.
Okay, everyone, I hate to do this to you because it's so fun to catch up with people, but we don't want to be here to the wee hours of the morning, which is somewhat of a possibility if we don't move it along. So I am going to take, you can keep voting for those of you that are at home and wish to get here. So you still have some time to come and vote on Article 13. And when the hour's up, we'll take a pause and we'll, we'll let everyone down there that's working hard to count the votes first. And when I get a hand raised for in between a pause time, I'll read the results of Article 13. But in the meantime, we will proceed with Article 14. Municipal CIP CRF funding. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $700,000 to be added to the capital reserve fund known as Town's Municipal Capital Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund established at the 2013 meeting. Okay, this is just a majority vote. So if someone put that on the table for me, lay it out. Thank you. Seconded? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 14? None? Okay. Well, all those in favor of Article 14, please signify.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Article 14 passes. Article 15. Municipal CIP CRF projects. It's a bit of a different. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $338,400 for the following projects? GGB, municipal complex re-roofing, $176,330. GGB. IT hardware and software upgrades, $5,000. GGB. Repair post office supply support peers with new ones, $10,000. TC slash TX, two new ballot counting machines, $15,000. Library, repair water damage, $31,500. Police cruiser with outfitting, $70,270. Fire personnel protective equipment, $20,300. Highway annual surveying and engineering services, $10,000. And withdraw $308,400 from the Municipal Capital Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund established in 2013 and $30,000 from the police special detail special revenue fund established in 2001 has offsetting revenue towards the cruiser purchase only. This will be a non-lapsing article per RSA 327A, Roman numeral four, and will not lapse until the work is complete or December 31, 2026, whichever comes first. Estimated tax impact, none. And it's recommended three to one with one abstention by the selectmen and seven to one with zero abstentions by the budget committee. If someone can put that, bring that to the floor, that'd be great. Brought to the floor. Seconded? Okay. Any discussion on Article 15?
So I'll speak quickly to this article. This is one of the items where the select board and the budget committee, this is one of the reasons that we don't get along that well. Also, as Andrew has said, typically you want to try to repair the roof before the drywall is falling in. And that is exactly what we're trying to do with all of the peaked roofs on the municipal building. That's a, it's a mix of flat roofs and roofs. So that'll replace the section over the police station. It's obviously over there. And the interior of the building. That was, the municipal complex has been built up over time with many different additions and that's why we have so many different roof materials of which many of them are leaking and we're hoping that this will resolve that before any further damage is done. Similarly, the library had some gutter work done that was not properly completed and caused damage that wasn't viewable from the interior. And they did that massive renovation, I believe it was roughly two years ago. And finally, our compromise came in that we reduced this by over $200,000 so that we could bring forward some capital investments that are beneficial to the town. We're resolving deferred maintenance issues that haven't been completed and leaving future capital investments for better financial times in accordance with, with the budget committee's recommendation. So we do ask, approve this.
You are recognized. Give us your name.
Jason Sutherland.
Okay.
I'm just listening on this. We have a couple of articles coming up, 37, 38, 39, that are all related to potentially voting machines and ballots. We have line item on here, two new ballot counting machines. I'd like to make a motion that we take up voting on this article until after those articles, after 37, 38, or so after 39. after 37, 38, or so after 39.
Okay. So, this is a procedural vote, a motion that you're making, that you want to, we've already, we've already brought it to the table.
Yeah, well, I guess table it then.
You wish to table it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, there's been a motion.
It should be after, after we actually vote on whether we're going to have voting machines before we vote to buy new voting machines.
Fair enough. There's, there's been a motion to table Article 15. Anyone want to second that? There's a second back of the pack. All those in favor of tabling Article 15?
Aye.
All those against it? I guess we're not going to table Article 15, sorry. Any further discussion on Article 15? Folks, just, just so you know, don't be shy about that. It's legitimate. If you have a motion to make, get up here and do it. Yeah, go ahead.
Rhonda Lamphier, Fremont Road. Just to make sure he understands that if we tabled that, that article's gone, so none of those projects could get completed this year. None of them. So if you were tabling it just because you didn't like one specific item, tabling would not be the way to go. You probably should have prepared an amendment.
Sorry to interrupt you, but we've already said he can't table it.
I'm sorry, what?
We've already told him he's not tabling it.
I understand, but it would be nice if he understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on Article 15? Well, you know what? I'm going to put that up for a vote. All those in favor of Article 15, please indicate. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Article 15 passes. Article 16. Okay, so this is the operating budget. I don't know if this is the big kahuna, but anyway, I'll just read this. Shall, okay, operating budget, shall the town, and I want to, unfortunately, I have to make some changes to this, don't I? Oh, boy. Okay, here we go. I'm going to do the best I can. Because we had some prior warrant articles that changed the budget a little bit here, okay? So I'm going to do the best I can. Okay. Shall the town raise and appropriate the budget, the Budget Committee recommended amount of $6 million? That's what it looks like. Is that correct? What? No? I'm not reading it from here, because I have to read it from this piece of paper. I'm telling them why, because in the first couple warrant articles, you accredited some money back to the budget. So it reduced the amount of expenditure. Does everyone get that? I need someone to explain that to the, whoever handed this to me. We removed on Article 9, $7,847. And on Article 10, we removed, removed $10,000. So that's dollars we removed from the budget. That makes sense? $17,133. So if we subtract that from $6 million, oh, boy, $7,974, we now come up with $5,997,127. Do I get applause for that? Okay, so anyway, that's the new number in there, so just keep that in your mind. For the operating budget, for the support of the town government, for payment of salaries and for payment of statutory obligations of the town. Tally vote, seven yes, one no, and a zero abstention. That's the Budget Committee. And then the Selectmen Board recommends, oh, boy, Again, we arrive at that by subtracting $17,000. What did I say? Sorry, so, I was correct, so yeah, $17,847 from the Selectmen's number. So there's a difference between the two numbers of $75,133. Okay. Between the Budget Committee's number and the Selectmen's number. And the Selectmen say five, zero, zero. Five in favor, zero, no, no votes and zero abstentions. Okay. The article does not, the reason we made these new calculations is you'll see that little disclaimer on there that says, "The article does not include appropriations voted in other warrant articles." And not just appropriations, but credits. Am I fair to say that? Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to, general government. Board of Selectmen is $2,888,361. Budget Committee, $2,812,814. Public Safety, $1,697,767 unchanged. Budget Committee, $1,666,928 unchanged. Highways, $918,348 by the Board of Selectmen, unchanged. $881,207 by the Budget Committee, unchanged. Sanitation, $267,073 by the Board of Selectmen, $257,073 by the Budget Committee. Health and Welfare, $38,062 by the Board of Selectmen, $37,815 by the Budget Committee, unchanged. Culture and Recreation, $327,480 by the Board of Selectmen, $326,149 by the Budget Committee, unchanged. Conservation, $8,167 by the Board of Selectmen, $8,139 by the Budget Committee, unchanged. Debt Service, $2 for both the Selectmen and the Budget Committee, unchanged. You're probably wondering why I read it all this, but people on TV, they think it, don't have this, they need to hear it, whatever, they're listening. So, the only real change you have is in general government, as you can see, and that's just the overall bottom line. So, if someone, please bring that to the table, after all that, Schmuel.
So moved.
And seconded? Okay. Any discussion on the budget, Article 16?
I'd like to make a comment on that first. The budgets that we see here, there's, there is a difference between the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. But in reality, we have all worked together to come to the best, and the lowest prices we could come to the cost here for it. Both the Committees, the Board of Selectmen, and all of the departments weigh in on this. And once they do that, that's when we start to look at what do we absolutely need and what's, what would, is needed for, or wants. We have spent literally hundreds of hours as, as a team here, I'll call it a team, to try to get to numbers that we feel are the right numbers for the town. And as we go through this, as we've gone through multiple additions here and revisions, we've gotten to a point where we feel these are the numbers that we need to, to maintain, to maintain the services and retain the individuals that we have here working for us. We have great workers in all the departments. Some of the departments, the bigger ones, got hit hardest. As you look at the fire, the police, the highway, and a couple of others, we really looked hard at those numbers, and the Budget Committee, you know, really directed us to where we can find the most savings. We looked at and compared the numbers to where we were last year and the num, and the amounts that we didn't spend and the line items. So we have gone through this, every single line item, to get to these numbers. So these are the numbers we feel that are appropriate and the numbers we feel that we need to, to manage the government without reducing the, any major services. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Ephraim Dobbins, Hackney Drive. I'm the chairman of the Chester Budget Committee, and I think I get along just fine with the Select Board. I, I would like to briefly, and I promise, provide some context for this operating budget in front of you right now. To begin, I'd like to note that this budget we're presenting is a bottom-line budget. It's a single number, although you presented a bunch of different department numbers just now. In the end, it's a single bottom-line budget, and those numbers are not a commitment for those departments. We can move money, the Select Board can move money around as they see fit underneath that total. So what we're voting on right now is a single bottom-line budget. We're not locking in the specific numbers for those departments. I want to talk a little bit about how we went through this process. When the Committee started this process of evaluating the budget for the next fiscal year, we, we looked for benchmarks to use to evaluate the affordability of any increases in the budget, as well as indicators, frankly, of public sentiment toward any increase. The latter indicator was presented to us in the form of the amended budget at the School District Meeting in March. At that meeting, the amendment was passed, reducing the budget by approximately $400,000 to a year-over-year increase of 5%. We took note of this reduction in this proposed school operating budget as a benchmark to consider when evaluating the town operating budget. A second benchmark we considered was the expected average annual wage increase for 2024. This estimated increase was pretty consistently reported as 4%. The Committee also noted, though, that this was just an average, and many taxpayers may experience less or no wage or income growth this year. Working from those benchmarks, we endeavored to deliver a budget with an increase that fell within that 4% to 5% range. The original budget we started with was above that range, and we worked as a committee and with the Select Board to reduce this amount to a number that was at or below 5%. The operating budget from the Budget Committee you see in this article represents an increase of $272,362, net the $17,000 that Michael brought up earlier, or 4.8% over last year's operating budget. So we did end up getting into that range we were hoping for. We took a hard look at everything the Board of Selectmen did to, we found there is a path to get to this number. It's not the only path, the one the Budget Committee found. There's other paths that could, could get us there. But I just want to let you know that those were sort of our guideposts, and, and where we ended up was a little under the 5% and above the 4%. Thank you.
Kevin Dolan, Shepherd Home Road.
You can raise that microphone if you wish. No one's going to get.
One of the budget lines that was discussed quite a bit this year was the call firefighter line in the Fire Department budget. That line was significantly reduced this year. For those that do not know, the Chester Fire Department is staffed by a full-time chief and a second full-time firefighter, although the latter has been vacant for almost two years now. Together, they staff the station with two between Monday and, Monday through Friday, between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM, excluding holidays. The rest of the time is covered by call firefighters responding from home. Article 4 of the Chester Fire Department Regulations establish that all members of the Fire Department are paid casual employees of the town. These firefighters earn a modest sum when they attend trainings and respond to emergency calls. This is our sincere thank you to them for doing what they do and provides that extra incentive to show up at 2:00 in the morning. Unfortunately now, new members of the department are now classified as unpaid volunteers, and they are not being paid. I don't think that is right, especially since the entire fire service is hurting for people and participation, including ours. We should be doing whatever we can to incentivize participation, because the alternative is spending even more money to increase full-time coverage. For that reason, I'm going to make a motion that the Select Board be strongly urged to pay all members of the Chester Fire Department in accordance with Article 4 of the Chester Fire Department Regulations, including back pay where necessary.
Okay, so, as a matter of just, of a point of order, you can't make a motion to force anyone to do anything.
I understand that. This is a motion by the legislative body to recommend that the Board of Selectmen do something. I understand it's not enforceable.
Yeah, so you can bring that up. It's not going to be too relevant now, but when we ask at the end of this meeting if there's any other business, you can bring that up.
Okay.
And, and you could take even like a straw vote if you want of who would be in favor of doing that, but it's not going to.
Yeah, I understand it's not legally binding, but I, I want to impart on the Board of Selectmen that we should be supporting our, our call firefighters and paying them what they're supposed to be paid.
Okay.
Chris Kizora, 104 Town Farm Road. Mr. Moderator, I, I came up because I'm confused. We have two budgets with about $70,000, $75,000 difference between them, 1.2%. And as a voter, I was, I'm a little disappointed. I would hope that these two groups would have come to an agreement and simplify the bottom-line budget for us before the town meeting. My second question is just, if this is a bottom-line budget, I see lines, and that's kind of why this looks like an itemized budget to me. So, I'm not sure as a voter what I'm voting on. Am I voting on the Board of Selectmen budget? Am I voting on the Budget Committee's budget? And do we have a choice today? Thank you.
Phil Gladius, Six Road and Gun Club Road, also the Fire Chief. So, just to put everybody's mind at ease, we actually have four people, Monday through Friday. We have some perdeums, we have some people covering shift work. So we have four people during the day, not two. And the other issue with the, the new people that are coming on, we had an issue earlier that we rectified through the DOL, and that was the recommendation that we made. And when they get their requirements completed, then they get hired on, just like everybody else, and they become an active member of the Fire Department.
Diana Sharon, North Pond Road. I just want to, to the Fire Department, them to know that they can amend the bottom-line of this budget to include extra funds for these firefighters. So if they have a figure, they can do that.
Mike Weider, 80 Red Squirrel Lane. If you open your budget books to page 41, this is why it's important to understand how a budget works. If you look at line 30, it's 42, 201, 4111030. You look at the actual spend of that line last year, $29,426. It was budgeted for $75,000. They put in this year $50,000. There's plenty of money in that line to cover what they're trying to do.
I'd like to make a comment on the operating budget. We didn't answer that gentleman's question.
Sure, I'll recognize Chuck. Go ahead. I'm sorry. We'll recognize Chuck first, and then we can, we'll let you speak.
So the, the budget that you're, you're, will vote on today is the Budget Committee's. This is the Budget Committee budget that puts forth. That's the one you're voting on. You're not voting on the Board of Selectmen. We did, you know, we put that just as a comparison. We think that there's other funds that were probably needed to meet our needs, but you are only voting on the Budget Committee's budget here. And anybody can amend the other, second part of that, anybody can amend these numbers on the floor, and they'll have to vote then on an amendment to see whether or not that will pass. But just, just for clarification, it's the Budget Committee's budget you're voting on.
Incidentally, and before I let you speak, if you are going to amend anything, please put it in writing and bring it up here. I have a pretty good memory, but sometimes I can't remember what I had for breakfast. And I will not remember your amendment. And so if you could please bring it up here, if you're going to amend something in writing, here on my desk, okay? Thank you. Go ahead, yes.
Thank you. Michelle Godet, Laurel Hill Road. I have a question, which is in regards to the highway and streets line. On the budget for this year, you have amounts of $918,000 and $881,000 respectively. But for this fiscal year, under actual expenditures, it looks like we are at 1.5 million. So I'm kind of curious for the rationale of why we're budgeting for next year half of the amount that we're actually spending this year. So I'm wondering if people on the Committees could explain that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Chuck. Oh, Steph? Someone? Yeah, so can you, can you repeat that? I think, well, I'll try to repeat it. Maybe I should have her repeat it, but she's trying to figure out why we're only Maybe I should have her repeat it, but she's trying to figure out why we're only raising half of what was spent last year.
Sorry, I should have stayed up here. Yeah, this year, on the actual expenditures, I'm on page 53, on the Highway and Streets section, it says actual expenditures for Highway and Streets, $1.5 million. So I'm guessing that's what we're spending this year. But we're budgeting for next year about half that amount. And I don't know, in my household budget, if I'm spending a certain amount in one year, I don't account to spend half that in the next year. So I'm just looking for an understanding of why we think we're going to spend half that next year.
That is a very good question. My name's Dick Trask, Board of Selectmen. The reason why this number looks different... Too close?
Oh, am I breathing into this? Oh, sorry. And I wasn't trying to distract them from listening to you, I promise.
The appropriations in that figure that you're talking about were actually included warrant articles that we will be voting on later. So that's why that number's different. If you look at the current highway budget and the budget inside the line for the budget, it's very close. That's the reason why it looks so different.
Okay, so it's some of those vehicle line items or certain line items that are called out in other articles?
Right, so we vote for funding for the repair of our roads and warrant articles.
Okay, thank you.
So you'll have an opportunity to vote on those later.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
So David, take note. You not only have to stand up for a long time, but you have to hold your breath. So Article 16, any further discussion? There appearing to be none. All those in favor of Article 16 as not amended, but as technically correct, as I read it, and meaning that the bottom line that you're voting for on the Budget Committee is $5,990,127. And the change is that the general government has gone to $2,812,814. All those in favor of Article 16, please signify. Any opposed? The eyes have it. Okay, Article 17, Town Reevaluation, CRF. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be added to the Town Revaluation Capital Reserve Fund established at the 2009 town meeting in order to prepare for the next town reevaluation in 2029? And a majority vote's required. And the Selectmen, the Select Board, sorry, recommend, four of them recommend it, one does not, and there's no abstentions. The Budget Committee, eight recommend it, zero abstentions, zero noes. If someone could bring that to the floor. Seconded? Seconded? Okay. Any discussion on Article 17? There appearing to be no one running up to the microphone. All those in favor of Article 17... Oh, sorry. Chuck, I didn't see you.
Just ask everybody's clear on that. So periodically in 2029, as it says, when we'll have to have our next town reevaluation, and that helps us understand what the tax rates will be based on new homes that are built and reevaluation. Every year, we put a certain amount of money aside, and that's what we're asking for, to put that in, in $15,000, and it's a total of about $75,000. And we're adding to the capital reserve. By the time we get to the 2029 period, we will have the money for that, so we won't have to raise and appropriate any money at that time. So that's what this is written for.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, Chris Addick, Chester Street. I just have a quick question for the Board. It's not totally directly at this warrant article, but my question is, I noticed that you're taking $704,000 out of the Capital Reserve Fund to fund articles over the course of this warrant. What does that leave in the unreserved fund balance?
Deb, do you have that number? We have that number, and there's a certain percentage that is recommended we maintain in that.
I'm just wondering what's in there currently and what will this drop it down to if all these articles are approved?
For those of you at home, there's only 15 minutes left to vote on Article 13. If you want to come to the hall, town...
Sorry, to answer Chris's question, the amount left in the UFB, if all of these pass, is $2,152,139, which is 10.45% of the recommended, between 5% and 17%.
Okay, so you consider that a healthy amount? No concerns? So my question to you then is, there will be no need to do an overlay in September when you set the tax rate? Nobody's going to answer that. Just to let you guys know, in case you don't know, five years ago, when we did a revaluation, when you do a revalue, everybody's assessment goes up, tax rate comes down. Five years ago, the Board of Selectmen voted to do a $500,000 overlay. There was a 3% increase to the tax rate with no particular designs in mind for what to do with the money, simply to bump up the unreserved fund balance. And the only purpose I can see behind it is to give you all these warrant articles that are coming out of the unreserved fund balance, so they can put no tax impact on them. It's...
Any further discussion on Article 17? 17? There being none?
I'll address that question.
Okay, sir.
One of the reasons why we're using a little bit more money out of the unexpendited fund balance is because our revenues have increased because of the interest rates have increased, so there's a little bit more in there. It gives us the opportunity to utilize that without adding additional costs to the taxpayer.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, but I just want to let you know that we'll be watching in September to see if another overlay is done.
Understood, and I mean, absolutely should be. And it's a little premature to actually answer that question yet, but we don't want to get into that situation, and that's why we're looking to balance it as much as we can here with monies coming from either unassigned or grants or whatever we've got this year. So we're working towards minimizing tax increases.
Okay. There appearing to be no further discussion. All those in favor of Article 17 is read, please signify. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Article 17 passes. Article 18, Town Master Plan, CRF Funding. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $7,000 to be added to the Town Master Plan Capital Reserve Fund established at the 2019 town meeting to meet statutory requirements to periodically update and amend the Town of Chester's master plan. Majority vote is required on this article, and the impact is .01 dollars or one cent. And the Selectmen voted, are favored 5 to 0 and no abstentions, and the Budget Committee is 8 to 0 with no abstentions. Any discussion on Article... First of all, can someone bring that to the floor? Seconded? Okay. Any discussion on Article 18?
Just to tell you a little bit what's going on with this warrant article. The master plan, we redo the master plan every 10 years, between seven and 10 years. What the master plan is, it is part of the capital improvement program. It is actually a long-term planning vehicle inside the, which is what the capital improvement program is, a long-term planning vehicle. This is what the taxpayers of Chester wants their town to do and look like in the next 10 years. That is the purpose of the capital, or the master plan. So we are in the process of redoing our master plan right now, and everybody will have an opportunity to participate in the master plan and tell your Selectmen what you want your town to do in the next 10 years. And we put a small portion, I believe it's $7,000, a year away to pay for it every 10 years.
Okay, any further discussion? Article 18. Not appearing, Article 18 as read. All in favor, please signify. Any opposed? Okay, Article 18 passes. Article 19, Winter Road Maintenance ETF Funding. Special warrant article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $105,000 to be added to the Expendable Trust Fund, known as the Winter Road Maintenance Fund, established at the 2006 town meeting and increased at the 2017 town meeting for the purpose of plowing, salting, sanding, and general winter road maintenance in the Town of Chester. The Winter Road Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund shall not exceed $105,000. Majority vote required in this, and the tax impact is 14 cents on assessment. So the Selectmen have voted five yeses, zero noes, zero abstentions, and the Budget Committee has voted eight yeses, zero noes, and zero abstentions. Anyone bring that to the floor for me? Seconded? Thank you. Okay, any discussion on Article 19?
Yeah, just what's the balance in the winter maintenance account right now?
105.
So we're asking to raise 105, and we have 105 in it?
This is one that we only use what it's over between the plowing and spending. And James, if you're here, I don't believe we went over budget on both of those and stayed within budget. The salt budget, absolutely, we went overspent in that one. So if, in fact, we don't need the money, we don't have to vote on this one.
So what I just got, I think the number's 115? That's in it right now?
It's in it. We'll have to reduce at least that excess.
I understand that. So can we just table this article?
Yes. Wait a minute. James, can we just clarify?
So what's your name? Okay, James Piper is the Supervisor of Roads, Mike, so...
Yeah, I'll wait. I'll withdraw until he finishes.
That'd be great if you could, and he's not a registered voter. All those in favor of allowing him to speak to the town meeting, please signify. Any opposed? Okay.
Hello, James Piper, Supervisor of Roads. Yeah, the plowing line ended up in credit by, I believe it was $35,000. The salt line went over by $29,001. So between the two, if you combine the two, there is a credit of $6,880-something. Mike Olson raised a very good point in the deliberation session of the Budget Committee a few weeks ago as to whether you go into the 105 if you go over. I went to get clarification on this. There was, I didn't come across anything set in stone about that. I will stand corrected, but between the two lines, there is a credit of $6,887.
And I thank you for that, James. That's the operating budget. That's not this line. This line was set up for over expenditures for winter maintenance. So my question back to the Board is, and I'll let Rhonda, well, I'll ask the question to the Finance Director, do we have that money in it still right now, 115,000?
I'm not sure if it's 115, but it is over the 105,000. You've got the number? And Deb, if you want to give the actual number, but...
That's fine.
We did not go over.
Then my motion stands to table?
Yeah.
Okay, so what are we seconding?
To table it, Mike.
You moved to table?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so it's a motion to table and seconded. So before I can hear any more discussion, I have to bring that before the Board of the Town. All those in favor of tabling Article 19, please signify. Any opposed? Article 19 is tabled. Okay, Article 20. Establishment Funding of Emergency Contingency Fund. Shall the town establish a contingency fund for the upcoming fiscal year in accordance with NHRSA 3198A for unanticipated emergency expenses that may arise during said year? Further, to raise and appropriate the sum of $74,536 to go into the fund, which equals 1% of the amount appropriated by the town for town purposes during the current fiscal year, excluding capital expenditures and the authorization of debt. Said funds will be taken from June 30, 2024, on assigned fund balance for this purpose and with no amount to be raised from taxation. Excuse me. Any appropriation left in the fund at the end of the year will not be retained but will lapse to the general fund. A detailed report of all expenditures from the contingency fund shall be made annually by the Select Board and published with their report, and this requires a majority vote. So no tax impact, recommended 5, 0, and no abstentions by the Select Board, recommended by six of the Budget Committee members, and not recommended by two of them, no abstentions. Can someone please bring this to the floor? Seconded? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 20? Okay, Mike.
Just a quick update on what we're trying to do with this fund. What we've been doing is we've been cutting a lot of fat out of the budget. What we're trying to do is we're trying to make a really thin, thin budget. This allows the Board of Selectmen to, and the Budget Committee, to cut the budget to pretty thin because we have an emergency fund or a rainy day fund. The main thing is, is this lapses and goes into the unexpendited fund balance every year if we don't use it. So, I mean, you know, it comes out and then it goes right back in, and it would be something that we'd have to vote on every year.
Mike Weider, 80 Red Squirrel Lane. I just don't understand the fund. We have a contingency fund with $2 million in it. If we had an over expenditure or anything happening, all it requires is the Board of Selectmen to post for a public meeting for the legislative body to meet, to vote on, taking money out of the unassigned fund balance. Why are we building another account that we, the legislative body, would have no say in because now the Board of Selectmen can pull from that fund because we just made a fund for them to use? For the intended purpose, I'm fine with, but we can still do that emergencies through funding that we already have sitting in other lines by just having a meeting with the legislative body. So I don't agree with it, building a line to just move a line back to give discretion to the Board for what they consider an emergency. The legislative body should be involved with that decision, in my opinion.
In order to do the emergency the way Mr. Weider recommended, we would have to get approval from the Department of Revenue.
Yeah, Ron McKinnon, 43...
We actually, to give an example of that, we had a situation with Lane Road this year where we had a Beaver Dam break and washed out, and we had to go and get permission from the Department of Revenue to spend money for that.
Ron McKinnon, 43 Hanson Road. I'm also on the Budget Committee and one of the vote people that voted no. I don't think we need this fund. It's just another fund for them to pull out of. As a Selectman, it's your job to go to the Revenue Department when you need to pull money. We have funds, there's reserve funds all over the place. The last thing we need is another one that's just easy access without any save from the people. Thank you.
Mike Weider, 80 Red Squirrel Lane. Mr. Trask, I disagree with you. We would still have to go to DRA for that appropriation anyways, and they're still going to do the same exact thing. The difference is, the Board is making the decision and not the legislative body. So I don't understand why it has to be built that way when we're trying to do inclusiveness, we're trying to make sure that everybody's involved in the process, building a fund that will take the legislative body out. It's just a public hearing. It's not like they're asking for a vote. You're just asking and publicizing what you're going to do and the permission DRA gave us. So again, I still don't agree with it.
Okay, so I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the voting, I'm calling the vote time on Article 13. If the checklist people can start... If the checklist people can start counting the vote back there, that'd be appreciated. Thank you. Go ahead.
Chris Haddock, Chester Street. I'm opposed to this warrant article, and one of the reasons is, at the end of the year, this money just lapses back into the unreserved fund balance, which means if you want to have an account like this, you have to have a warrant every year to raise it. Okay? And the other problem I see with this is, no one's authorized to expend from it.
The Board of Selectmen would be authorized to spend from it, but they have to have a...
It's not in the warrant article.
Hold on, hold on. Point of order, just lengthen this sentence, and then you can get right back up there, Chris. Go ahead.
They have to have a public hearing first, which has, means the public is involved in the process. It may not be a voting situation, but they are involved in the process.
Okay. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
It's quick. Lane Road got fixed. The process that exists works. We don't need to set aside this money in this fund.
Okay, any further discussion on Article 20? I didn't see who... Oh, sorry.
Nate Rockwell, Chester Street.
Thanks, okay. Just because I know him, you're right, so we have to get everyone else to know him. Okay. Okay, there appearing to be no further discussion. All those in favor of Article 20 as read, please signify. All those against? Nay. So, Article 20 fails. Article 21. And incidentally, they're currently counting votes on Article 13. We'll probably finish by the time we get to about Article 24, and then we'll take a break. Article 21. Establishment Funding of Vested Vacation Benefit ETF. Special warrant article shall the town establish an expendable trust fund under the provision of NHRS A3119A to be known as the Vested Vacation Benefit Expendable Trust Fund, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 to be placed in this fund. Further, to authorize the transfer of $30,000 from the June 30, 2024, unassigned fund balance for this purpose with no amount to be raised from taxation, and to appoint the Select Board as agents to expend. The purpose of this fund is to provide a one-time payment of accrued vacation leave for full-time, non-elected employees who retire or leave employment with the town, and a majority vote is required. The vested vacation benefit expendable trust fund shall not exceed $60,000, no additional tax impact. So, they're saying, it says here, no tax impact. The Select Board voted five yeses, zero noes, zero abstentions. The Budget Committee voted five yeses, three noes, and zero abstentions. Will someone move that to the floor for me?
So move.
Seconded? Okay, thank you. Any discussion on Article 21?
Chris Haddock, Chester Street. Just like on the last warrant article, my question is, how many coat pockets, cookie jars, and sock drawers does the town need to keep its money in?
No coat pockets at all.
Hey, wait, wait, wait.
None whatsoever, Chris. Okay, what the whole idea behind this is, is to go ahead and protect the budget because you have people each and every year that ask us for continuing their vacation time. The Board of Select persons has decided that we will not allow anybody to carry more than 80 hours. Now, we have several people that are getting close to retirement and some that have given some notice, okay, that they may be leaving. We don't want them to go ahead and leave and then have still a bill to the town because they didn't take their annual leave. And so, the whole purpose of this is very simple, to make sure that we have the funds in the budget to go ahead and handle it. But it's not directly in the budget. It will never go over $60,000, number one, and the only reason it's going to $60,000 is because it starts with 30, and with the way the interest rates are going, it'll probably take about 10 years to double it, maybe a little bit longer. So, there is no expense for the town at all with this, and this isn't one of those things that just is a fruitless reserve fund or so. It's protection, just like you had in your business, just like I had in my business. Okay? And everybody has a chance to work this out. When someone leaves, and we have two people that are leaving probably this year, okay, when someone leaves, if they don't take their vacation time beforehand, we still have to pay them. And so, since we have to pay them, this is a way that we can handle it. It's like the winter maintenance budget. Okay? And you can disagree, I have no problem.
I'm agreeing with you. I understand the winter maintenance budget. It's $105,000 on something that goes over, you know, every few years. We dip into that. You're talking about $30,000 on a $6 million budget. I cannot see how $30,000 can break that.
It's not going to. It's just a start. We're not losing everybody in one year.
Hi, Ron McKinnon, Chester. How about Hanson Road? I live in Chester. I'm also on the Budget Committee. I'm one of the ones that was opposed to this. I work in the private sector. I learned while I was here. Let's start with the fact that their salary is already a line item, budget item. So, if they're leaving, their vacation time is built into their salary. They're getting paid. That's already factored into the budget. I also work in the private sector, and I get a lot of vacation, but I accrue it over time. I'm retiring this October, and if it worked the same way as the town does, our vacation starts in January 1st, yours starts July 1st. I'd be retiring January 1st because on January 1st, I'd have any vacation that I haven't used. I'm using it all up, but it doesn't matter. Say I saved it. I'd have six weeks there and another six weeks that I collected on July 1st, and I put in my papers on July 2nd, and on July 7th, I get a check for 12 weeks paid. That's just the way I see it. That's how it works in the public sector. I bet there aren't a lot of people that don't retire after the beginning of January. That's just my opinion based on nothing but common sense. Thank you.
Lorna Hazelton, Derry Road. I just wondered if you guys could tell me what our financial liability is right now for vacation or PTO time or whatever you guys call it? I mean, it must be a line item that you guys are carrying everywhere. Every year it is a liability to the town, so I just wondered what that figure would be.
We don't have a line item for that.
Well, it's a liability that the town carries. I mean, every year you carry that, so you have to know what that liability is. I mean, I don't know how you wouldn't know that. We know that. I mean, when we had our business, we know every year, it's an item that you have to carry on your budget as a liability. So, I mean, do you have, are you carrying thousands of hours for people? I mean, you must know what that is.
Every year, we've been, every year we've been asked, and as long as I've been on the budget, can we carry something over? Can we do this or that? Some people get as much as four weeks, and we've been...
Honestly, I don't care how much they get, but what I'm saying is, if you have, Chief Berube gets so many weeks a year. So, if he only takes three of five or 10 or however many he gets, you know, I mean, you're accounting, you have to know how many you're carrying forward for the year. That's a liability for you guys. That's the first thing you have to pay and have the money there to be able to pay. So, I don't understand why you would think we have to put it somewhere else. Your budget should be able to carry that. You shouldn't be having people carrying weeks and weeks and weeks. You should be limiting what they're carrying so that your liability is less, and I don't know why it's, I mean, you can't have hundreds of thousands of dollars of liability, so why do you have to carry a separate account for that? Why isn't it just coming out of your bottom line?
So, this past year, we updated our vacation policy so that employees are allowed to carry over up to two weeks, 80 hours, that they have to, I think they can spend it any time in that upcoming year. But as our current budget stands before this point, your accrued time is part of your salary line. So, if we don't have any funds outside of the operating budget to pay for retained vacation, and that is what this 30 to 60...
So, Matt just said the liability is $22,000. So, you want to put $30,000 in and continue to put in, but now if you're limiting them, that shouldn't continue to be growing substantially? I mean, the minuscule amount that's going to come out of your budget, I just don't know why it has to be a separate account that you want to put all that money in.
The reason that we're asking to have a separate account is so that we are certain that we have the money. As our, through our work with the Budget Committee, we have been tightening our budget from 5% excess and down to 3%. And so, the tighter our budget is, the less likely that we're going to have money for the unexpected expenses. And so, we're trying to be as transparent as possible by having our budget reflect accurate expenses.
I just think in a budget of $6 million, the $22,000, I don't know why you need a separate account for that.
So, for the legislative body, if you want to see that, Appendix A, page 74, you'll see liabilities, current liabilities, you'll see current positions, compensation, absentee and payables, $22,665. Again, this is why we have these meetings, and this is why it's important that we get this information out to you early enough so you can understand where the budget and how it works. I don't agree with it, just like Lana doesn't agree with it, and I think most people in the real world understand. When I was a selectman, a policy was put in place that they had to use vacation before the end of the fiscal year. We never, when I was a selectman, approved any carryovers or payouts. It's part of why we had the policy put in place. We would like, I would hope, we would like our employees to take some time off of work-life balance. I hope that we don't want to keep them here around the clock, making them work and thinking they have to take vacation, can't take vacation. At the end of the day, building a fund that we don't need by any means out of a budget that we can probably find it in, if we looked hard enough, would work. So, my recommendation would be to table this. Is that a motion or a recommendation?
My motion to table this article.
Okay. Okay, so, motion moved and seconded that we table Article 20. Okay, all those in favor of tabling this article, please signify. Any opposed? Article 20 is tabled. Okay. So, I have the results from Article 13. And for those of you at home as well. There were 52 yeses and 214 noes. Article 13 fails. Okay. I can't hear that, so I have to get up to the front, to the microphone if someone's saying something to the body or whatever. Oh, I'm sorry. The numbers are 52 yeses, 214 noes. And you need a three-fifths vote in favor. That make sense? Okay. Article 21. Establishment... Oh, sorry, that was Article 21. 22, sorry. Okay, there's been a motion to table Article 22. And it's been seconded. All those in favor of tabling Article 22, municipal complex roof... First of all, before you table it, I have to read that, okay? It has to come to the floor. So, here we go. Article 22, Municipal Complex Roof Replacement. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $176,330 to replace the roof over the municipal complex? Should this expenditure be approved in warrant Article 15? This article will be tabled, and a majority vote. And so, obviously, it was approved, so that's why we have the motion to table, and it's seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's tabled, Article 22. Article 23. Away CIP CRF Funding. Special warrant article, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,750,000 to be added to the Capital Reserve Fund known as the Highway Capital Improvement Plan Capital Reserve Fund, established at the 2015 town meeting, with $146,202, which is anticipated, the anticipated grant amount, this from the New Hampshire Highway Block Grant, to be used to offset this appropriation. $200,000 June 30, 2024, unassigned fund balance to be used to offset this appropriation, and the remainder of $1,403,798 to be raised through taxation. Should the actual amount of the Highway Block Grant deviate from what is anticipated, the amount withdrawn from the unassigned fund balance will increase or decrease by that same amount, and a majority vote is required. Tax impact is $1.90 on your assessment, and the tally is five yeses from the Selectmen, zero noes, and zero abstentions. On the Budget Committee, it's six yeses, two noes, and zero abstentions. If someone could bring Article 23 to the floor. And it's seconded. It's seconded, okay? So, it's on the floor. Any discussion on Article 23?
I'd like to talk to this article for a few minutes. The process that we go through to establish what we're spending our money on, on the roads, is quite lengthy. We have a Table 10 in the CIP, which is a long-term planning vehicle, as I spoke of earlier, and what we do is, we put, every year, we have a list of roads and things that are, projects that'll get done every year. There are also machines in there as well. But the main thing is, is what we're trying to do, is we're trying to get our roads fixed. It's over $2 million a year for the next 10 years, is what we're looking at. Every year, we put that process to the test, and we end up cutting different road projects and so on and so forth, and we got it down to 1.75. We have also, we also have our street scan process that we do, we look at, and it is a process that scans the street and tells us exactly what needs to get done with the roads. We are underfunding our road repair every year. A matter of what we need, it's a matter of what we can afford, and that's where we come up with this number.
Okay? Okay?
Ephraim Dobbin's Hackney Drive, I'm on the Budget Committee. So, I want to talk about this article and the subsequent one about spending, which addresses what Dick was saying, that we do need to spend money on the roads. The second article that follows this one is the spending article. That's where we actually spend money to do the road work. A little history on that article is, we amended the article down from approximately $1.7 million to $1.05 million to reach a point of agreement between the Budget Committee and the Selectmen. We did not address this article here, which is the funding. It was left at $1.75 million. I'd like to make a motion to amend this and take $500,000 out, make the amount raised and appropriated, $1.25 million, and make the amount raised from taxes, $900, and my eyes are going away, $903,798. Essentially dropping $500,000.
I'd like to second that emotion.
Okay, so, come up here. Just write that down for me.
While he's amending, may I speak?
No, but I'd like you. But you can't speak because now we have to speak on the amendment. So, if you're speaking on the amendment, you're welcome to do that. If you're speaking on the article before it was amended... No. Sorry, Mike Weider, AD Red Squirrel Lane, I'll speak on the amendment. So, go, let me put it, first of all, let me bring it to...
$1,200 and...
Does everyone understand what the amendment is? That's what I thought. So, I'm getting him to write it down here. Yes. There we go. Okay. Okay, so, it's the original Article 23, except it's reduced by $500,000. So, the total is now $1,250,000, and the amount drawn from taxes is $103,798 rather than $1,403,798. That's the proposed amendment. Will some, so, there's been a motion to amend, seconded, discussion. Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Weider, AD Red Squirrel Lane. So, Ephraim was correct, what he said. This is a funding line. The line next Article 20... The line next, Article 24, is that what we're going to spend? We're only going to spend $1,050,000. So why are we funding $1,250,000? Fund $1,050,000, that's all that's going to need to be dragged down. The rest of it is just going to be sitting in a fund for the highway to use for other things and not intend it for what is in the CIP this year for work. So I, I'm not making amendment change, I'm just explaining what it is. We don't need the 200,000 more.
Okay.
Chris Kuzora, 104 Town Farm Road. It's 8:30, we're about halfway through, people are starting to leave. And I believe, Mr. Moderator, the Budget Committee Chairman of the Budget Committee that voted in favor of this article just amended it down 500,000. And I'm looking at the Select Board, who I'm assuming, who I know, put all year into putting this together, deliberating on the information in front of them, they all said yes. So the Budget Committee said yes, the Board of Selectmen said yes. I don't know what this is for. I, uh, I'm invested in other things. So I'm trying to trust the experts here, but right now, we have a chair who's going against his own board? I'm confused.
I understand how that can be very confusing. Again, this is not about how much money we need, this is about how much money you guys can afford to pay in taxes. We all live in Chester, we all pay taxes. This is about how much money you want to pay in taxes. It's that simple.
All right, so you guys, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Chris Haddock, Chester Street. You guys really think that we can afford to raise taxes 902,000? I know I'm speaking to the original article, but I'll get back to the amendment, all right? I don't know if you guys realize it, I tried to tell you two weeks ago, walk into your, walked into your meeting, I tried to tell you, you're heading this town for a more than double-digit tax increase, all right? 902,000. The school got 895,000 between the increase in their budget and the warrant article that passed. That alone is raising your taxes 5 and 1/4 percent, okay? This is asking for even more money. It's close, it's only about $7,000 off. Take the school and this one warrant article, together, we're looking at a 10 and 1/2 percent tax increase. And you think that's reasonable and what this town can afford. Anyhow, back to the amendment. Ephraim, thank you for making this. This is what I was trying to get you guys to do two weeks ago. I don't think you saw that how much this is raising the taxes. I really don't, all right? And Ephraim's amendment, although I didn't come prepared with a 1.25 million dollar one, but that, instead of being a 5 and 1/4 percent increase on the taxes, that will be a slightly more reasonable, it's a 7.1 percent increase to the municipal budget, and it'll be a little bit over 2% to the tax rate. So if you support the amendment, you're looking at 2% for this warrant article, 5 and 1/4 for the school, and the other things that are going on tonight, you're still going to see a 7 and 1/2 percent tax increase. But that's a lot better than a 10.8, which is where this warrant was headed.
Go ahead.
I'm Kim Shays, I live on Carcon Street. As you might can tell, I come from the South. That may be a secret.
Can you pick the microphone up? Hello?
There you go, yeah.
I've been before this board numerous times, and every time, I get nervous and uncomfortable, and I can't understand why, since I'm a trial lawyer. But it just seems inhibiting to have so many good people all wanting essentially the same thing. And sometimes I think you don't see the forest for the trees, though. I think when Mr. Haddock said, if you don't protect what you have, you're going to end up paying a heck of a lot more in the future, and you need to think like that. I mean, Chester is a remarkable, beautiful place, and these roads are a catastrophe now. It is not, not all of them, of course, but certainly Carcon Road and Donna Street and others. And I don't mean that in a critical way, but it's gone on for so long, a country lawyer like me needs to let you know, you've got to do something. And I base that on fact. There are hundreds of small towns down south where people got worried about, well, we're going to pay X percent more in taxes, we're going to do this more in taxes, and then let the town die. And when the town died, there was nothing left, there were no taxes and there was no town. Now, you may think that's an overstatement, but you need to think in terms of preserving what you have. The roads and arteries of this place need to be fixed, and it's been acknowledged, but it's not enough to simply acknowledge it. You've got to fix it. And the only way to fix it is with a substantial amount of money to do that, to accomplish that. And if I'm understanding this amendment correctly, I mean, it's apparently a spur-of-the-moment decision or action, that is going to impact how much money is, is going to be allocated to fix the roads. And that's just unacceptable. You drive off that highway that changes names from Dairy to, then it changes, as I understand it, to Raymond. We've lived here two years, and you, and you drive in off that busy road, and then you head Carcon Street, the beautiful neighborhood where all of the neighborhood wants me to be here and, and say what I'm saying. The Board of Selectmen have, have heard me on numerous occasions say one, essentially what I'm saying now. They all support what's been presented in this budget. And of course, the Budget Committee has also voted, or, yes, voted, I sense is the word, to fix it with this amount of money. And if we keep pecking away with this and that, worrying about, we're going to have to spend an extra dollar or two, you don't want your, your beautiful town, my beautiful town now, and my wife's beautiful town, to disintegrate because you don't want to pay any taxes. I mean, it's just not, it, it may seem sensible to save a dollar or two, but we, these roads have got to be fixed, and it's just a beautiful thing to, to allow to be, to deteriorate unnecessarily. And may I ask a question at the end, please? What will the impact of this amendment have on the overall ability financially to pay for these roads? I don't understand that part. No, he didn't. No, he didn't.
If we don't put the money aside, aside at the CIP account, then it's not there for us to take out to put, put the roads in it. So this is a funding mechanism, that we fund the CIP account, and the next warrant article is removing the money from that account to fix the roads.
That's what, so it's less money, though. It starts process for having less money to fix the roads, right?
That is correct.
All right. And I, I invite, is, the Board of Selectmen have been assiduous, the Budget Committee has been assiduous, and just ignore what they say and just willy-nilly reduce the capability or the needs by $500,000 just at the snap of a fingers, is not intellectually consistent with what's right. And I think it's wrong, it's a matter of brains and a matter of heart, to, to reduce this budget after all these people have worked so hard on this issue. I mean, you can't just, you're talking about doing away with hundreds of hours of work, and then one person stands up and says, well, let's reduce it 500,000. Thanks.
Ron McKinnon, Hanson Road. I just want to provide a little clarity on why there's a difference between the funding mechanism and the budget that the Budget Committee wrote to approve. The Budget Committee did not agree with either one of the selectmen's budgets, and it put us in a situation where if we didn't come up with something that, the difference was too great, they call it the 10% rule, I don't understand all the mechanics, it would have left no money for the highways. So we met at the last day, the 11th hour, and we came up with a budget of the $1,050,000. The object was to come here, because we were out of time, and we could amend to the funding mechanism to match the agreed-upon budget. And I'm just providing it for clarity, because it does look like it doesn't make sense. But we had to get it done at the end, and the funding mechanism
So each time you turn away from that microphone, people can't hear you.
Okay, the funding mechanism can be addressed today, but we had to have the line item by the midnight of the 28th, which just happens to be the date it was. So I just wanted to explain that, why there was a difference. It wasn't, we agreed to 1.7 million, we didn't. We agreed to 1,050, and we were going to address the 1.7 million here. Thank you.
Mike Weider, 80 Red Squirrel Lane. I'll just ref, I guess the best thing to say is, I would vote no on the amendment, my personal opinion. I did talk to the road agent before I came up here. He's fine with 1,050,000. That's what he's asking for. He's not asking for 1,750,000. No, 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 we're not. We're talking about the funding at 1.75 million.
So I just, I don't want any private discussions, if you'd like to come up
Yeah, so we, we amended it down to 1,250,000. Warrant Article 24 is the spend for that money at 1,050,000. The road agent is fine with 1,050,000. Why are we funding an extra 200,000? Just like the Budget Committee member just said, it was just to get it in so they could get it, the warrant out to the public, and the numbers would be amended here. I would vote no, I would call the vote, I would vote no on the amendment for 1,250,000, reamend the budget to 1 million, this article to 1,050,000. That will cover the cost of warrant Article 24, which the town asked for, 1,050,000. You don't need to have 250,000, 200,000 sitting there in an account where it's going to sit in unassigned fund balance anyways, we can use it at a later date. The CIP was built to build it and drag it out based on, based on what's the needs and what we could do that year. Just having extra money in an account that we can draw off of, and not for the intended work that was in the CIP that was approved, doesn't make any sense. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Hello, Mike Olson, Chester Street. I did this job for 16 years, thank God I don't have it anymore. I support the reduction. I think the number of 1,750 is a little high. I don't think they can spend that kind of money in one year. I did it for a long time. And the reason we're behind, for 10 years, we came to this building and people voted no on a lot of roadwork. It was my last five years that the town started funding money, and I'd get an average of a million dollars a year. We would do a big project and a small project, and then we would plan for the following year. And in my mind, I think a million, a million two is adequate every year, and in about 15 years, I think you'll catch up. And that was always my intent. So I support the amendment. If you want to lower it, fine, but I think the 1.7 is just too much.
Okay, so I'm going to let Chuck speak to this, Chuck, and then let you speak.
I think I want to explain as to why it was reduced, the amount spent was reduced. The Budget Committee, the town can only appropriate a certain percent of what is approved by the Budget Committee, and we ran into that limit. And that's why we reduced it, because we want to make sure this gets in here, because we need to fix the roads.
Okay, so, go ahead, Chuck.
Dave Lavita, 235 Raymond Road.
Hang on, Dave.
Go ahead.
I recognize Chuck, just let him speak, David, then you can
I'll answer some of the questions here. I think that there are the two different aspects here, and one is the funding and then the spending. When we first put this together, the road agent came to us, and it was 1.7 million to be spent on roads. We've reduced that, so we've already reduced the number of roads that we can do this year. If we look at what is Table 10 in the CIP process, and we created the Capital Improvement Program 2015, 2016, so that we could start setting money aside so we could do projects without bonding them, without going for other loans and paying interest. So if you start to look at the funding, it can be different, and it should be different. If we look at the CIP, Table 10, between now and 2029, you will see, 2031, actually, you'll see it's recommended, for the roads that still haven't been repaired yet, to get them back up to passable conditions, Kim, it is 16.1 million it's in there. Over the seven years, that means we have to raise over $2 million if we're going to meet those roads. If we don't raise more than what we spend, we, the gap is going to get greater, and more roads are going to come on for repair after that, every year another road will come on. So the, the principle of the CIP to begin with was try to set money aside so that you could fund these programs without costing extra money, and having money set aside so that you can do these projects and, and not have to make a decision that a certain road won't get done in that year. So it is to try to look at future and try to keep your taxation down in the future here over the next several years in particular.
Okay, Dave, go ahead.
Dave Lavita, 235 Raymond Road.
You're going to hurt your back, Dave.
I'll be fine.
You're going to hurt your back.
Well, I suppose a lot of taxpayers have waited a long time for their roads to get done. Last year, the year before, they said they were going to get done, they weren't done. As I drove around sticking up signs, the micro bumping around, ball joints, bearings, filth, I couldn't imagine living on some of these roads and coming home every day and saying, when is it going to get done? We met a couple of weeks ago and we compromised the school budget. We need to compromise again. I say you don't reduce it 500,000, maybe 300,000, give these guys a break because they deserve it and they should have it. We found a way to bite the bullet, go find the funds somewhere else because they're out there, and get these roads finished. Thank you.
Chris Haddock, I'd just like to thank Chuck for explaining that. It was a good explanation. The point of the Capital Reserve Fund when it was, or the Capital Improvements Program when it was first adopted about 15 years ago, was threefold. One, we were collecting impact fees, we couldn't keep them if we didn't have a capital improvements program, they would have had to go back to the builders, so that helped the town. Number two, reason for it was, well, okay, I'll go right to the number three reason. The number three reason was to keep everything, keep funding level. You look ahead 20 years, you figure out what you're going to need and spend on roads in the next 20 years, and you fund it at 5% every year, maybe with a small escalator. That was the intent. We're right back to where we were before with looking for a bond one year and then spending nothing the following year. We're going from 500,935 dollars last year that we put into this fund, you know, into the Capital Improvements Fund, or Road Fund, we're going to 1,403,000 this year. That's a 2, 902,000 increase and a huge impact on the taxes. This is why I support the amendment. It's an increase over last year, but it's not almost triple the amount of money that we're raising in taxation, all right? You're right, we have to get up to a certain point. The way the money is spent is not linear, it depends on, on the project. Sometimes you have to stave up for a big project and then spend it down, sometimes you can keep going. But you can't look at trying to fund next year every time through this, because then you're going to get back to big increases one year, underfunding the following year. So I don't agree with Mike Weider on only funding this at the amount that's going to be spent next year. I agree with the amendment that 1 and 1/4 million is a, you know, is a good compromise between the two. The 1.75, I think, was way too much. That'll give you an extra 200,000 towards next year, and if you have to go up next year, you can go to 1.3 million, and you won't even notice it in your tax bill. But if you go to the 1,050,000, and then next year you go to 1.3 million, you're going to see another big tax bump. Let's get the funding up to where it's supposed to be and try and keep it level across the board so that we don't see these large increases in our taxes.
Thank you. Good. Excellent.
Thank you. Thanks, Colin. Ephraim Dobbins, Hackney Drive. Kind of following up on what Chris said. I, I, that 200,000 is not something we can dip into, that extra 200,000. If we vote to fund 1,250,000, and in the next article we spend 200,000 less, 200,000 is not sitting in some account that can just get spent. It is sitting in the Highway Capital Reserve Fund, the CIP Fund, and it can only be spent by by this legislative body. And if it's not spent today, it will not get spent until next year. The next thing I'd like to say is, next year, based on the discussions we've had as a budget committee, I feel certain that next year, we're going to be very amenable to a higher, maybe not grossly higher, but a higher amount of highway spending. We agree the roads need work in this town, but we wanted to see what a million dollars of work looks like this year, see how that, how we can execute on that now that we have our new supervisor of roads with a couple of years on his belt. I would expect next year, it's going to go up. This year it was proposed at 1.7 million. We didn't want to go that high. But we may go that high next year and we'll be 200,000 ahead on it. If we, if we go with 1.25 million of funding against the 1.05 million spending. And lastly, I don't want to confuse funding and spending. There's a second article behind this, which is the spending. That's where we actually take the money out of the fund and put it to the road work for the next year.
And it's okay. Now, we're not going to call the question, but I'm going to limit further discussion to these last two gentlemen that are standing, and that's it. It's on the amendment, just the amendment.
I understand. I'm still Kim Chase and I'm still from the South. Let me--
There's some pretty smart people down there, so--
I know. A lot smarter than I am. The problem I have personally from my own involvement in the world is that if you keep kicking the can down the road and find a reason to kick it down the road and put it off, what the gentleman just said, to next year we'll do this and the following year we'll do that, I just think it almost becomes a habit of keep kicking it down the road. I understand that this article and the amendment is aimed more towards funding or maybe exclusively towards funding as opposed to spending, but you're still leaning, if you will, towards taking away money in a sense, if not fiscally, you're certainly psychologically in the body and your mindset going, well, we'll just keep putting it off and putting it off and putting it off. Carkin Road has gone 30 years, 30 years now, without being repaired. Mr. Mike has told me that and the neighbors have told me that. We've lived here for two years and each year we're told that. You know, it's not like there's bad people involved and good people involved, but you just tend to want to put something off. I mean, it's a catastrophe. What is going to happen if somebody, you talk about car damage, what about drainage issues that are occurring in Carkin Road and Donna Street? I say my respectful suggestion would be to do what the budget says it's going to do. It's there in writing and it's been approved. I just, I would ask that it at least be maintained, because if you keep engaging in the habit, if you will, of year after year after year of putting it off, these roads are never going to be fixed. And if they continue to be deteriorated, you're going to dissuade other people from wanting to move to Chester. They're going to look at these roads and go, well, what in the world is going to happen? You're going to really impact your ultimate tax base in that fashion. So I ask that there be no amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Mike, I think you've been up a couple of times, but I'm not sure. So can you say it in 15 words or less?
Me?
Yeah. I didn't think so.
So let me just, if we look at last year's funding, page, I don't know what page it is, 230 and 231, we funded this at, at 900,000 last year. And we drew down 738,000 last year. So 200,000 was sitting up there in that fund that we're talking about. We're adding, and I don't care if it's 1.1, 1.2, I don't really care what the number is, but it should never be 1.7. We have to go slowly. Now, let's talk about why and how it works. I'm the one that pushed the CIP in this town years ago. We had none. We were living off of offsite improvement money from state highway, roads only. By us funding it and not sharing it with new people coming in, we are the ones paying for it all right now. We are the ones paying for it. The whole idea of the CIP is that we share that with new people coming into this community. As houses get built out, the impact fees go to highways, police, fire, school, recreation. Some of the funds that we're using to fund this is coming from CIP. Some of this comes from other areas. But at the end of the day, why are we funding it at such a high rate when we, the town, BOS, road agent, will sit with the budget committee at a later date, looking at the CIP, readjusting the CIP? Chuck made a point, 16 million. I understand what's in the CIP. I look at it all the time. But we select what's going to go as a priority and what's not. We don't have to pay the full 16 million at an X amount of years. That's not the intent of it. The intent is things will come, things will go. New projects will come in, projects will drop out. We just got to look at when we fund, we fund to a level, and I agree, we bring it up slowly. We don't bring it up dramatically, for the legislative body not to see a rate, a high or a tax change, dramatic tax change in their tax bill. The whole intent is to see it level out. Funding it at a level rate based on inflation and based on what we can afford instead of these big spikes. This will be a big spike if we go to 1.7. 1.25 is not going to be a big spike. But we got to be smart and we got to think about this every time we fund it, what we're funding and what we're spending. Again, we funded 900,000 last year, we spent 238,000, 100 and something thousand sat aside. We're going to, they were, we're funding 1.25 and we're only going to spend one. Another 250,000 is going to be sitting in that account. So now you have 300,000 that is sitting in that account for the big project supposedly, but we're not sharing it with anybody else.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, I'm calling the question. All those in favor of the amendment to Article 23, which reduces the lump sum by 500,000 and the tax contribution by 500,000? All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The amendment passes. So please tell me no. But now want to speak to Article 23 as amended?
Aye.
I call the question. Second? Someone standing up? Too late.
I propose an amendment to further reduce the amount from 1,250,000 to 1,050,000.
Okay, there's been a motion to amend further the amended Article 23. Does anyone second that? It's been, it's been seconded.
Now, Mr. Moderator, did you get it in writing?
Pardon me, Mike? You can't hear me?
I didn't. Did you get it in writing? Did you get it in writing?
Well, he has to put it in writing. I would have told him that, but thank you. Yeah, okay. So you're going to have to figure out what that number comes to with a pencil. Let me give it to you. So just, just give me the amendment.
I need to state this.
I'll get him to do that. That's going to take 700,000 off each number.
So it's already amended down to--
500,000 off, so it's 1,250. Somewhere he wrote it down for me better. Calculator, it'd be easy, right? The other number is going to be 1,403,798 minus 700,000. So it's going to be 17, it's going to be 1,000, it's going to be 700, 703,798, right? So get up there and give us your name and I'll read that off. Okay, so if you could please give us your name and your motion. So his, go ahead.
For the record, my name is Jason Sutherland, Candier Road.
Okay, so he's moved to amend Article 23 so that the lump sum is now 1,050,000 and the amount drawn from taxes is 703,798. So that's the amendment, which takes an additional 200,000 off each number, right? So it's been moved, it's seconded. Does anyone second it? Okay, it's been seconded. Any discussion on this second amendment to Article 23? I think we might be repeating ourselves on all this, but if there's someone who wants to talk, I'll give you a very brief period of time here to get up to a microphone. Okay, I don't see anyone. No one ran up there. So all in favor of the second amendment, Article 23, which reduces the lump sum and the tax share by an additional 200,000 so that the lump sum is now 1,050,000 and the tax portion is 703,798. So all in favor of that second amendment, please signify.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that second amendment fails. Okay, here we go. Article 23 as originally amended, okay? Here we go. All those in favor, please signify.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, Article 23 as first amended, okay? Taking 500,000 off each sum. Passes. I was told, so you told me I didn't have to read this article, but motion to restrict reconsideration of Articles 9 to Article 24. Oh, sorry, okay. So there's been a motion to restrict reconsideration of Articles 9 through 23. So this is basically a thing saying, we really like to get out of here sometime. So, but that doesn't mean I have any opinion about it. So is it moved? And seconded? Okay, it's on the floor. Any discussion? Well, of course, you can't discuss it anyway. Sorry about that. I lied. All those in favor of limiting, actually barring reconsideration of those articles, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
You've got counsel sitting there. I do not believe you can do that. I thought the restriction had to come after each, the vote on each article.
No.
She's saying no?
No. You can, you can restrict reconsideration of articles that have already been taken up, voted, discussed and voted on.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a procedural motion. Someone could move to overturn that.
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, you can have it. Okay, we're on Article 24 and this is the last one we're going to do before a break. Okay, so you want me to not take up Article 24? That relates to this one? Sure you want to do that?
Move this in front of it so we can vote on it before the break.
Okay, I got it. So there's been a motion to take Articles out of order. So we've already taken up amended Article 23. Instead of taking up Article 4, we're motion to start take, to take up Article 36 through 39 in that order next. Is one, someone to second it? It's seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. So that's what we're going to do. But you know what? I'm not going to do it right now. We're going to take a bit of a break and stretch. Before you get up, okay, I want to make an announcement, if I can.
Fire truck for Article number 25 is outside, so invite them to take a look at it.
Okay, so a couple announcements. First announcement, first announcement, Liz Leaco's, if you are listening to us, I've had, you have a lot of friends in this town, because I've had five people come up to me and say, Liz wants to be the village cemetery trustee. So I hereby declare Liz elected. Second thing, all those of you who have been elected, you're welcome to come up here and I'll be happy to swear you in at the break. Next announcement, Chester's 2024 Top Dog. Wow, announcement. Every year, to encourage dog licensing, the town clerk's office runs a top dog contest. Special thanks to the second graders at Chester Academy, who choose the winner each year. Chester's 2024 Top Dog winner is Dexter, a six-year-old black lab. Wow. According to his owner, Lauren Toko, his special skill is sit and spin. That's what my wife tells me to do half the times. And this, this best attribute is giving lots of love to everyone. Dexter will get the number one dog tag in 2025 and his picture will be on display in the town clerk's office. He also wins a basket full of goodies. Congratulations Dexter. Dexter isn't here to pick it up, so the basket's at the back, so his owners might have to help out with that. Yep, go ahead. Steph wants to--
I know we're all tired and we're all complaining, okay? And we should be. This is way too long. But I want to go ahead and talk about the front page, the cover of the town report. I want you to realize that a young lady who's 100 years old is on that front page and is sitting through this meeting. And so I want to go ahead and congratulate Millie Bennett. Thank you. That was well deserved and thank you.
Okay, so a well-deserved break. We're going to take about a 15-minute break and you can walk around, talk, do your thing, and in 15 minutes I'll call you back to sit down. and in fifteen minutes, I'll call you back to sit down.
Before we start the meeting, we've got a couple of announcements, and we'd like to recognize Michael Scott as your moderator. He's been doing it for how many years now?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five years.
I can say something, but, so, thirty-five years ago, we had moved back, and my wife has lived here her whole, pretty much her whole life. She, she has a photo she needed touched up by Skip St. Clair. Our moderator had just passed away. She went and saw Skip St. Clair, and they entered into a conspiracy. He told her that the town needed a moderator, and she said, "Good, I'll sign Mike up." And I couldn't get anyone to run against me after that. I'm not here because I'm overly qualified, but I've, I've had a wonderful time doing this. I've met the greatest people who care about this town and care about each other, and they even don't get too hard on me when I make mistakes. So, I really appreciate it. I've had a wonderful time, and I know that David will do a really good job. I, he came up to me, says, "Now that I'm sworn in, do I have to take over the meeting?" My answer to him is, "David, if I keep these people past mid, yeah, you're gonna come here and take the meeting, so I can get home and get out of Dodge." Anyway, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I'd also like to recognize, really, the Volunteer of the Year. And it's a person who's put in hundreds of hours and has been very instrumental in the sound systems, in the video systems, and everything we have in town. And it's Bob Grimm. And Bob is not doing well at this year, but we have Joe and some others that have stepped up to help him, but we recognize Bob Grimm for, I think, over twenty-five years pulling together the sound system and video systems, and appreciate all the things that he's done for us. Is Jane here?
We have a gentleman that we'd also like to recognize, who's been an employee for the town for, I think, probably thirty-plus years. And he's not leaving, but we're gonna say thank you anyway. That's all the better. I'm glad you told me now, you know? Problem is, is that he's telling me now, and I've spoken to the gentleman yesterday, and he lives two doors from me, but I'd like, it's what, thirty-one years or so? Scott Haggard. Twenty-six, I'm sorry. And now, I'm gonna make a request. I've been doing this on the board for a number of years, and I want to go ahead and say thank you for all of those that supported me, and I, and I appreciate it. But this town, as you've heard it tonight from a number of different people, is supported by volunteers. And one of these, that we're gonna present an award to, and I didn't see her here tonight, but has been on the zoning board for some thirty-six years. We've gone ahead, and she and I have butted heads, and we've loved each other, because we sit and we'll talk and we'll agree, disagree on occasion, but she does a wonderful job, and that's Billy Maloney.
One last comment before we get to the rest of it. As you came in here, you might have noticed the fire truck that's outside. That is a demo that we're looking at, that essentially hasn't ever been used for fires, but as we get to that warrant article, think about that vehicle and the cost savings to the town, and how we're gonna use the CIP process for that. But if you notice, it's a beautiful machine, and we're getting a really good value for it.
Okay, back to work. We're gonna take those articles that are out, I'm gonna have to actually borrow your book, I think, because I don't, somehow I'm missing the last page of my... We're taking Articles out of, no, we're not. We're taking them out of order here. So, we're start, we're starting off on Article 38, I believe. Thirty-six, I mean, sorry, you're right. So, Article 36. And we're gonna go through there through Article 39. So, Article 36. Land use change tax funds reallocation. So, petition, this is a petition warrant article. Shall the town rescind the action of the 1997 and 1999 town meetings to place one hundred percent of the land use change tax revenues collected pursuant to RSA 79A into the conservation fund established in 1997, and instead place fifty percent of said funds into the capital improvements plan, highway capital reserve fund, established in 2015, and the remaining fifty percent into the conservation fund. This action will become effective on July 1st, following the vote. Majority vote required. Estimated tax impact, zero. The selectmen, only one yes, three no's, and one abstention. The budget committee, six yeses, one no, and one abstention. Does anyone, who are the petitioners can bring it to the floor, but someone needs to bring it to the floor. They moved, seconded? Okay. So, any discussion? Maybe the person that petitioned, I don't know, let's see.
David Levita, 235 Raymond Road. I'd like to amend the article.
Okay, there's been a motion to amend. See what that amendment says. Okay. So, there's a motion to amend Article 36. To read it now as follows. Shall the town rescind the action of the 1997 and 1999 town meetings to place one hundred percent of the land use change tax revenues collected pursuant to RSA 79A into the conservation fund established in 1997, and instead place fifty percent of said funds into the capital improvements plan, highway capital reserve fund, established in 2015, and the remaining fifty percent into the conservation fund. This action will become effective on July 1st, following the vote. That's the amendment. It's been moved. Anyone to second that? What? Oh, I'm sorry. I blew that. He's what? He wants to delete that? Okay. So, next time when you bring this, put right beside it, "Delete." Okay, so I'll read it, now that I understand it. Okay. This is the amendment. Shall the town rescind the action of the 1997 and 1999 town meetings to replace one hundred percent of the land use change tax revenues collected pursuant to RSA 79A into the conservation fund established in 1997, and instead place, I don't know, into the conservation fund. The action will become effective on July 1st, following the vote. So, the person who wants to take that money... effective on July 1st following the vote. So the person wants to take that money and put it all into the conservation fund. That's what I read. I don't know, unless you can explain or clarify that for me, whoever filed the amendment. Well, okay, so it's been moved. Anyone second it? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment?
No.
It's on the amendment we're discussing. That all of the money that came from the land use change tax revenues is going to be placed into the conservation fund.
No, actually it said instead place 50% into the conservation fund. That was the amendment.
Where does that 50% go? Well, it doesn't say that here. I don't know what he's saying here. But that doesn't mean it's not saying something clear. It just means I don't know. The top one's the amendment? Okay. Yeah, I didn't know what you're doing. Okay, that's all right. Okay, so here's the, number three, try. If, to amend that article that said to, for it to say, shall the town rescind the action of the 1997 and 1999 town meetings to place 100% of the land use change tax revenues collected pursuant to RSA 79A into the conservation fund established in 1997 and instead place 50% into the conservation fund. This action will become effective on July 1st following the vote. So take all the money out and put 50% of it into the conservation fund.
Exactly. Not 100%, only 50% instead. That's
So then you don't want to take the whole 100% out of that, of those revenues?
Right, not the 100, just 50.
Got it.
And that was the amendment.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded. Any discussion on that? No discussion? Okay. So, go ahead.
Beth Soder, Lane Road. I'd like to table this warrant article, 36.
Thirty-six. There's been a motion to table Article 36. Anyone who's seconded? All those in favor of--
You can't table it. There's, there's an amendment on the floor.
It doesn't matter. I can still, it's a procedural. It takes priority over the amendment. Okay. All those in favor of tabling Article, pardon me? You can, you can give it point of order if you want, but I'm going, the amendment hasn't been voted on yet. So I'm moving, there's been a motion to table Article 36. It's not been amended. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed?
Nay.
It's been tabled, so you can't amend an article that's been tabled. She, she got up here before that happened, so, sorry. Article 37, Petition Ban Voting Machines. Petition warrant article to see if the town will vote to ban the use of voting machines in local, state, and federal elections. There's no tax impact on this. It was not recommended by any of the selectmen. Who wants to move this? Seconded? And seconded?
Mr. Moderator, I move we table this article.
Okay, so if you're going to make a motion, you have to go, I hate to do this to you, but you have to go up and be seen. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I move we table this article.
Okay, anyone want to second that? All in favor of tabling Article 37? It's tabled. Any opposed? I don't think there's, I mean, I just don't, there's one person that's opposed. Okay, so it's, 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 it's tabled. Article 38, Petition Pay Per Ballots Only, I think this is kind of related. Petition warrant article. Shall the following provisions pertaining to elections be adopted? All voting shall be by pay ballot and all ballots shall be hand counted only rather than by use of optical scanning or any other types of programmable electronic counting devices. This shall constitute a return to hand counting ballots and the immediate discontinuance of all electronic voting machines and electronic devices authorized for use by trial, by trial in RSA 65640. Shall pass, it shall be enacted by the Town of Chester, New Hampshire immediately. There's no tax impact and of course the selectmen reject this, four of them. Okay, so now there's been a motion to table Article 38. Will someone second that? If it's seconded. All in favor of tabling Article 38? Any opposed? Okay, so Article 38 is tabled. Article 39. Is there something you need me to do? Okay, let's just do Article 39. Okay, Article 39, petition, these are all related. Petition Hand Count Ballots on November 5th. So this petition warrant article is to see if the town will vote to hand count on November 5th the election ballots for the office of President of the United States. Okay, there's no tax impact in this and the selectmen, four voted against this and one abstained. So someone want to bring that to the floor? Okay, we'll have to get to the floor first. Second. Okay, it's on the floor. There's been a motion to table Article 39. A second? All in favor of tabling Article 39? Any opposed? Article 39 is tabled. Okay. Now we're going to go back. I'm afraid to do this, but we're going to take up Article 24. Okay, here we go.
Aren't you going to do 40?
Nope. Sorry. I wish, but no. Unless someone wants to take them out of order again, file a motion, but, okay, I'm reading Article 24. Highway CIP CRF Project, Special Warrant Article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,050,000 for roadwork in the Town of Chester and withdraw $1,050,000 from the Highway Capital Improvement Plan, Capital Reserve Fund created for these purposes. And this will be a non-lapsing article per RSA 327A Roman Rule 4. It will not lapse until the work is complete or December 31st, 2026, whichever comes first. No tax impact, five to zero for the selectmen and seven to one for the budget committee. Will someone bring that to the floor? And seconded? Okay. Any discussion on Article 24?
Just wanted to give a quick rundown about Article 24. We again went through the entire process of setting aside money for the roads. We started off at about $2 million and again we worked our way down to a $1,050,000. So that's where we are.
Okay, any other discussion on that? There appearing to be none. All those in favor of Article 24 is read, please signify. And any opposed by the same sign? Article 24 passes. Article 25. Okay. I think a lot of people saw this fire truck coming in. Am I right? Okay, good. I wasn't going to send you out there. It's because I was asked to send you out there to look at it again, but I was worried you might not come back. So here we go. Article 25, Fire Department Apparatus CFR, CRF Funding, Special Warrant Article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $150,000 to be added to the capital reserve fund known as the Fire Department Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund established at the 2021 town meeting, further authorize the transfer of $150,000 from the June 10, 2024 unassigned fund balance for this purpose with no amount to be raised from taxation. And it's a majority vote. No tax impact, five yeses, zero no's, zero abstentions from the select board, and eight yeses, zero no's, zeros abstentions from the budget committee. Someone want to bring Article 25 to the floor? And seconded? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 25? Are you about to discuss it, Sherrod, or, okay, who? Okay, go ahead, Sher.
So this is similar to what we've seen in the past. This is actually funding new equipment for the future. The next article will be talking about the fire truck. And because of the CIP process, we've been able to set aside enough money to be able to pay for a large piece of equipment like that. The equipment that we do need, we still need some, in about three years, we'll need about another $300,000 for another piece of equipment. And what we're asking for here is very similar to each year, we've come back and asked for, to fund it, to fund for future programs so that we don't have to go out and bond to anything else. So this one is for $150,000 to be put into the capital reserve fund for future purchases of equipment. The next one will be for the fire truck itself. So just clarification, this is to put into that capital reserve fund.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article 25? There appearing to be none. All those in favor of Article 25 is read, please indicate. Any opposed? Article 25 passes. Article 26, Fire Department Apparatus CRF Project, Special Warrant Article. Shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $645,000 for the purchase of an E1 Spartan FC94 pumper and associated upfitting to replace the Fire Department's 2003 Engine 2 pumper and withdraw $645,000 from the Fire Department Apparatus Capital Reserve Fund created for these purposes. And then some majority vote. This will be a non-lapsing article per RSA 327A Roman Rule 4 and will not lapse until the work is complete or December 31st, 2026, whichever comes first. No, no tax impact, five yeses, zero no's, zero abstentions from the select board, eight yeses, zero no's, zeros abstentions from the budget committee. Someone will bring that to the floor? Seconded?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on Article 26?
Kevin Dolan, Shepherd Home Road. I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Ted Scott of Raymond Road, who wasn't able to be here tonight, but he sent me his thoughts on this warrant article. So I'll be going through those and then adding some of my thoughts at the end. Ted joined the department in 1979. He was on the department for about 25 years. And he's been pointing out for a while now that there's a lack of people responding to calls in this town. The fire truck that has been presented in this warrant article is a really great price, but we've bought on price before and on delivery, not happy with the truck. Typically, new engines go for around $8.5 to $1 million. So this is really substantially below that mark. Engine 1 and the rescue are both going to be needing replacements in the next five years, engine 1 at least, refurbished. So the concern is who is going to staff this truck? The current roster has 19 members on it. This year, January through March, eight of those 19 members responded to greater than 10% of the calls and that includes the chief. Some members on that, on that roster of 19 members responded to zero calls in a three-month span. And occasionally, there are calls that go unanswered by Chester personnel. In the last quarter of 2023, there were 84 individual responses from members that are no longer on the department. The average response in September 2023 through December 2023 was 3.6 members per call and most recently, January through March of this year, it's down to three members per call for a 16% decline over five quarters. 20 years ago, we had 35 to 40 members on the department and those people showed up to staff the trucks. And if there was a fire, they all rolled out of the station. In today's reality, and this is a reality in the fire service around New Hampshire and around the country, we all rely on mutual aid for help. If there's a fire, every mutual aid company is bringing a truck and a crew and you'll see them line down the road. The seven or eight who may respond from Chester should all be on the fire ground, not at water supply, which is what the primary purpose of this truck is at a fire. So speaking about the current Engine 2 that we're looking to replace, each of the last five years, there are repairs at less than $2,000 per year for that truck. This year, there is $4,000 plus two other repairs that haven't come in yet for maybe about $6,000 additional. That's 1% of the cost of a new truck. If the plumbing is a problem, replace the plumbing. Put several thousand dollars in it if it needed. We should be keeping Engine 2 as a backup as long as it holds together. We simply do not need two engines. The tanker, which was recently purchased, has a pump, a ladder, and equipment that can be used as a backup engine, especially if you use the utility to augment transporting personnel. There is a plan to refurb Engine 1 and the CIP, but no one really liked Engine 1. It had its problems. It was also a demo vehicle and it was purchased at a price point like this truck. With less and less participation, the most important truck is the one with the ladder on it. That's Engine 1. So we shouldn't skimp on that one when it's time to replace or refurb. And we should get a ladder truck that's easier to operate, more friendly to drive, and a better fit for this department and the town. We should keep setting money aside for a more needed truck that will shine for the town for 20 years as FD membership may continue to shrink. Now there's just a specific example. There is a fire at 14 Toll Road where six members of the Chester Fire Department responded, including the chief, and we rolled two pieces of apparatus. In November of 2020, during the height of the pandemic, there were 17 members who were actively responding to call. 10 of those members were greater than 20% of all calls. And there were 11 members on the roster who responded to nothing. In January of 2024, there were only 11 active members responding to calls with only six greater than 20% and seven at 0%. So that was the end of Ted Scott's comments. The current Engine 2 that we're looking to replace with this brand-new truck has 34,268 miles on it. I, I'm, I love buying fire trucks. I love fire trucks, but I just don't think it's the right time to be purchasing this specific piece of apparatus for this town. I don't think it's the right fit and I think we should be saving this money down the line for future expenditures.
Okay, so, just on Article 26, do you want to respond to that section? Go ahead.
So this piece of equipment is over 20 years old and if we don't have adequate equipment, any firefighters that show up won't be able to fight the fire anyhow. This piece of equipment has been on the CIP, the specific one, because it's so important for the pumper and water. And if you don't have water, you're not going to put those fires out either. But in this case here, this is a piece of equipment that was identified several years ago by even the previous fire chief. So it's consistent with what has been requested. We set aside a CIP program for this and thanks to all of you, we've raised up enough money to actually pay for this. So there will be no new taxation. The equipment you see out there is a piece of equipment that has been recommended right along. This piece of equipment, typically if we were to buy it new, it is more than that. It is significantly more, hundreds of thousands of dollars more. This is a demo that it hasn't been to fires. It's tough, but it's been around and showing people the equipment and what it is. This is the piece of equipment that's being recommended by the fire chief and the department. And I would recommend that because we've saved for it, we've put the money aside for it, we have it, we're not going to find a better deal for this in the near future. This, this piece of equipment will be sold if we don't buy it. I fully recommend that we purchase this piece of equipment now. Thank you.
Kevin Dolan, 219 Shepherd Home Road. This is a duplicative piece of equipment. It's, it's nice to have as a backup, but there's nothing wrong with it. Just because we have saved the money does not mean that we are compelled to spend it. Just because it's in the CIP does not mean that we need to spend it. It's very common for fire trucks to outlast their normal life, especially when they're not used heavily. And I think that's the case of what we have here. And I think this truck could easily get another five to 10 years out of it before it absolutely needs to be replaced. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you for that discussion and we're going to take up Article 26. All in favor of Article 26 is read, please indicate. Any opposed? Okay, okay, we'll try that again. So all the ayes, we're going to need, this is closed, so I'm going to have to get a couple of you from the back up here to make some counts. All those in favor of 26, please raise your hands and keep them raised. Okay, that's different, okay, so now, okay, down. All those opposed? Okay, this is going to, so we're going to have to count. So back, again, all those in favor, please, hands back up and we're going to have to count them. So keep them up. Did they get this side?
Did you get the bleachers?
Do we get the bleachers? Did you get the bleacher? Okay, okay, good. So what's total? Okay, okay, so now, you can put your hands down, and then those who are against, please raise your hands. 94. Okay, the ayes have it. Article 26 passes. Okay. What? Oh, sorry, 102 to 94. Pretty close. My, I had a nightmare the other night that they had a boat here in the town, and it was tied, and I had to break the tie. Okay, so Article 27, Municipal Property Improvement CRF Funding. The special warrant article shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be added to the Municipal Property Improvement Capital Reserve Fund established in 2006 and renamed in 2023. Further, to authorize the transfer of $50,000 from the June 30, 2024 unassigned fund balance for this purpose and no amount to be raised from taxation. Majority vote? No tax impact, five to zero and zero with the Select Board, and seven to one and zero with the Budget Committee. Anyone want to bring that to the floor? Moved, seconded, thank you. Any discussion on Article 27?
I'd like to speak to this article. This is just a small, I know it sounds silly to say any amount of money is small, but this $50,000, if we had it available, we would have been able to fix the library drainage problem immediately rather than waiting another year with additional rain coming in and causing rot to that building and further decaying our investment. This is an amount that would be able to be used to cover expenses to our infrastructure, which is decaying. It's not a large amount of money, but it is enough to solve small problems with our maintenance department staff.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes, no, yes? Okay.
In the warrant article, Rhonda Lamb, 527 Fremont Road. In the warrant article, you're calling it a municipal property improvement? Is there another name to that account?
I believe this fund was renamed last year.
Is it the same as the municipal complex improvement? Complex sounds to me like one building, this one.
The fund was renamed last year from municipal complex to municipal property.
You changed the name of it last year?
We did.
Okay, so do you know how much money is in that fund?
$265.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there appearing to be no further discussion on Article 27. All in favor, please signify.
Aye.
Any opposed, by the same sign. Okay, Article 27 passes. Article 28, PACT Fund, SRF Project, Special Warrant Article, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $38,000 for the purpose of providing public, educational, and governmental access television in the town of Chester. Said funds to be withdrawn from the Special Revenue Fund, known as the PACT Fund, established at the 2003 Town Meeting, separate from the General Fund and funded by Comcast subscribers in the town of Chester. It passed. This article have no tax impact. Majority vote, zero tax impact, 5-0-0 for the Select Board, 8-0-0 for the Budget Committee. Anyone, please bring that, move that to the floor. Moved, seconded. Okay, any discussion on Article 28?
Hi, my name is Caitlin Holland, oh God, okay. My name's Caitlin Holland, Arabian Way. In 2021, when I was 17 years old, I had started volunteering at Chester Public Access Community Television under the membership, mentorship of Mr. Bob Grimm, or as we affectionately call it, PACT. Since then, I have been appointed to be on PACT Committee, where I help to share valuable interviews, events, stories, and history to the town of Chester. I've witnessed the countless hours that many, including myself, have put in to make PACT what it is for our community, and our work is not over. We continue to set new goals to produce the best media possible to engage our existing and new viewers on each of our local channels. My favorite example of what we have done in the past year in the implementation of closed captioning, to elevate us to further levels of accessibility that we strive for. Speaking of accessibility, another example of how PACT is operating today is how we're live streaming this very moment from multiple different camera angles to bring our audience at home and for you guys to maybe rewatch later, the best views of the house. The sentiment of community television boils down to promoting civic engagement via hearing from diverse perspectives in our community on issues that matter and history that stands. PACT allows us to stay connected to our hometown no matter where we are in the world. I highly encourage others to get involved with PACT. I know that each one of you has a story to share, or maybe even idea for a program. We would love not only to hear from you, but to see you in the studio would be unbeatable. We welcome every one of you from every background and every age to get involved. We're always looking for volunteers, and we welcome you at PACT. I hope you all will support PACT tonight by voting in favor of this funding, which has zero impact on your taxes. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Caitlin, for everything you do and PACT does to promote all of the organizations and the historical aspect of the town. Thank you very much.
Okay, so Article 28. All those in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 28 passes. Article 29, Conservation Easements. Shall the town place conservation easements on the following town-owned properties. MAP at Lot 9-8-1, which is 2.79 acres with frontage on Shepherd Home Road. MAP at 5-31-0, 500, sorry, 5.12 acres with frontage on North Pond Road. And MAP Lot 7-29-1, eight acres with frontage on Candia Road. In order to permanently protect said area for nature study and recreation, to protect the watershed and wetlands, and to enhance and maintain the scenic wildlife and open space that are an intrinsic part of Chester's valuable rural character for the benefit of the town of Chester and its citizens. Zero tax impact, and Select Board is five yeses, zero noes, zero abstentions. So, someone to bring that to the floor? And seconded? Good, okay. So any discussion on Article 29? Go ahead.
Richard LeBlanc, Jr., Fremont Road. I am opposed to this warrant article due to the lack of definition regarding recreation in the town of Chester. The insufficient definition of recreation means that my version of recreation versus someone else's version of recreation is not acceptable. So I am opposed to this warrant article. Thank you.
Okay. Victor Shannard, horrendous Lake Road, and I am Chair of the Conservation Commission. So, since I know most of you don't have the tax maps memorized, I put together just a couple of quick slides to show you what you're voting on here. First slide, this is the North Pond Road parcel, and it's 5.12 acres. And this is where the kiosk is. You can pull off and look over on North Pond Road. This was obtained by the town in 1970 via tax collection deed, and we have verified that the town has clear title on this parcel. And you can see that the picture on the tax map shows a fair amount of land not covered by water, but I took this picture just a couple days ago. With almost no exception, if you go down by the dam, you can put out a blanket and take a picnic there, but this lot is water. So, again, you know, we're trying to protect the wetlands here. That's one of our tasks as the Conservation Commission, okay? The second parcel, eight acres on Candia Road. You can't go down Candia Road without noticing the large wetland there. This was obtained in 2016 by a tax collection deed as well, and once again, we put the effort in and verified that the town has clear title to this. Again, another picture, this picture's taken right off the tax card. And the last one, 2.79 acres, Shepherd Home Road. This was obtained in 1977 by the town via tax collection. Again, we verified the town has clear title to this. And there's a little story on this one, that this was accidentally left off of a 1999 voter-approved warrant article where the adjacent lot, the big lot just to the, below this one, the big 45-acre lot, went forward and was approved. And the BOS, I use BOS for historical references, that's what it was called back then, voted to bring both of these articles, both of these parcels forward, but again, one was accidentally left off. So, in the Select Board, again, back in 1999, I had already approved this one to move forward. It just got accidentally left off the warrant article. So, I'd like, and this is a picture I took last week, standing on Shepherd Home Road. Normally, when the river's higher, this parcel, again, is completely underwater. So, to address the gentleman's question about recreation, if you look at any of our conservation easements, they're all on file, they're all recorded, you can see what is allowed for recreation purposes. It's all low-impact recreation. Any questions? Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. Most of these lands that you've seen up here, they are underwater, pretty much entirely, or major parts of them. There's several of them that are really key to some of the aquatic species that we have. In particular, the North Pond is regulated by a small dam at the southern end of that. That area is very particular in species of Atlantic white cedar swamp. It's one of the few that we have in the area in the state, and it's really sensitive. If anybody's been over the Forsite Forest and walk on the walkways, you'll go through that Atlantic white cedar swamp, and it's really impressive. And it's through efforts of the Conservation Commission that they've been able to preserve some of these lands, and especially now, some of the work that's being done by the Conservation Commission with studying some of the additional species, the natural resources inventory, these are some of the critical areas that make Chester the rural character that we all want and love. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Steve Chisholm, Great Oak Drive. Typically, the easement itself is owned by a third party, is held by a third party. Who is that in this case?
So that's a good question, and what we've been doing, so to get a third party to take the easement, that costs a lot of money. So, in this case, the town will hold these, the town owns the land and the town holds the easement. Otherwise, you know, we would be putting out tens of thousands of dollars to get third parties to take these easements because there's stewardship. They have to be monitored, and they charge money. You know, they need to do that in perpetuity. So we've made a decision to save the town money and take on monitoring, the Conservation Commission takes on the monitoring themselves, and the, again, the town holds the easement, to answer your question.
But it could be transferred to a third party if one would step up and willing to do it without funding, right?
That is correct. I believe the easement is worded so that it could be transferred. If somebody were willing to step up and take these off our hands, you'd be doing it at their expense, but yes, that is correct.
Have you talked to any of the local land trusts?
I'm sorry?
Have you talked to any of the local land trusts about this?
We've had discussions about, we've kind of given up on talking to them because, again, what we go back is, you know, yeah, third, we'll take, you know, this two acres for $30,000, send the check for $30,000, and we'll monitor it in perpetuity for you.
All right, thank you.
Janine LeBlanc, Fremont Road. So I'm familiar with the area on Shepherd Home, but less so with North Pond and Candia. I'm wondering if there would be restrictions on those areas as to their use, such as ice skating, running a powered vehicle, like a small four-wheeler or something on the ice, that sort of thing. What kind of restrictions come with the use in this as a conservation easement?
Okay, so, all of our easements refer to low-impact recreation use. So yes, you can ice skate, you can kayak, you can hike, et cetera, but none of them provide motorized vehicles.
Right, and that became an issue in a couple of areas in our state where families have, for many, many years, had tradition of enjoying those areas with recreation vehicles. So that would be, that would be taken away from those people who enjoy that level of recreation?
So, if a private landowner gives you written permission to use a motorized recreational vehicle on their land, then yes, it's legal. If they don't, it's not legal in this state, okay? Now, if we were getting, if we were accepting a donation for a parcel of land from a private owner, it would have to be a donation, and they said, "I would like to permit in your conservation easement some limited use of motor vehicles," then we would take that into consideration, okay? You know, we can tune these easements to, again, a landowner's desire if they're doing a donation. If we're forking out money for it, probably going to lean heavily towards our standard donation, our standard easement, which is no motorized vehicle, use of motor, no use of motorized vehicles.
So as this stands, then, as a conservation easement, there would be limitations as to how it is presently used, as to how it would be used going forward?
That is correct, okay?
Just want to be real clear.
But I would like to be clear as well. If you're using a motor vehicle on these parcels now, you're doing something that's illegal in this state.
I'm not, so I was just curious.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
I just know there are situations.
Right, but that's illegal, okay? You need written permission by a landowner, so you'd need written permission. And, again, our easements don't, we don't consider that a low-impact recreation. You, especially these parcels, I, you know, again, maybe on the ice, but...
Well, I just know that that's been impacted in other parts of the state, so I was curious how that would be going forward. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your question.
Okay, appearing to be no further discussion on Article 29. Okay, appearing to be no further discussion on Article 29. All those in favor of Article 29, please so indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so there's been a procedural motion for no further reconsideration of Articles 37, 38, and 39. That's been moved. Anyone want to second that motion? It's seconded. All in favor of limiting reconsideration in Articles 37, 38, 39, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so no reconsideration of those three articles. Okay, you know, okay, so here we go. We're now on Article 30. Complete road discontinuance. Shall the town completely discontinue pursuant to RSA 23143, the extension of Ledge Road, being the portion that runs from Lane Road northerly to the Raymond Town Line, bounded on the west by Tax Map 12 Lot 3 and east by Tax Map 12 Lots 5 and 5 dash, and further authorize the selectmen to convey the discontinued portion of the road to the abutting landowners? And this is zero tax impact, and there was four yeses and one abstention. Anyone want to move that article? Move, seconded. Go ahead.
I drew the short straw.
You drew the short straw.
For us old timers in town, this road has always been known as Hook Road to the Raymond Line. Beyond that, it's Bald Hill Road. I'm not looking to make an amendment, but it's just a point of information so that as this road dies, it dies under the name that people will still remember. Hook Road.
I like it. I like it. Very good. Okay, any discussion further than that? Do you have some? Okay. On this one? Okay, good, go ahead.
You know, good evening. My name is Nick Tranquillo, and my address is 344 Lane Road. I promise to be brief, but before I begin, I want to address the select board. Should I ever, for any reason, require to put forth a warrant article, I will make sure that I'm in the first 10. And I'm not here after 10 o'clock at night. Thank you. Okay. So, this is a very simple story about my driveway, which also just so happens to be a Class 6 road. Here's a picture of my driveway facing south onto Lane Road, okay? Next slide, please, Deb, thank you. And here's a picture of my driveway facing north, heading into Raymond, as the gentleman had mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. So, 40 years ago, on May 9, 1984, Mrs. Gessell, the previous owner of my property, brought a warrant article to town meeting, which read as follows.
Next, please.
Next, yes, thank you. Article number 41, to see if the town will vote to discontinue the following road, extension of Ledge Road from the intersection of Lane Road to the Raymond Line. As you can see from this warrant article, it passed unanimously. So, you may wonder, why am I here tonight attempting to once again discontinue this same stretch of road? It's a good question. Next slide. In 2018, the New Hampshire Supreme Court issued an opinion that addressed the language of warrant articles as they pertain to road discontinuance. In the court's opinion, they stated that the language in warrant articles such as Mrs. Gessell's in 1984 is not sufficiently clear and ironclad. As a result, I was advised that the simple addition of the word "completely" to my warrant article tonight, as was read by Mr. Scott, would be legally sufficient to discontinue my driveway once and for all as a Class 6 road. And should you graciously approve my warrant article tonight, my intention in the near future, sometime in the future, would be to place a conservation easement on all of this property. I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Steve Brillhart, doesn't run road, doesn't run drive. So, we, I hear a lot about rural. Class 6 roads really are the only rural thing we have left. They are public access, subject to gates and bars, but they're the throughway for you to go hike, ride, road ride. I'm presuming there are some four-wheeler over here, not really valid in a Class 6, unless they're DOT capable, but those are the access points. I don't see this one on the New Hampshire GIS as a Class 6 road, because I, well, but if it has to go somewhere like Chester Turnpike goes and then stops, there's now a section that's cut off, so you can't ride those all the way through. You can't legally walk them all the way through. They're no longer public access. So, we just understand that removing this, discontinuing this, means there is no public access in the rural parts of our town. Those pieces are getting smaller and smaller and smaller, and we're losing those continued pieces that used to be major thoroughfares, quote, back in the day. And that's just something to consider, is as we talk about wanting to live in a rural town, those things are being taken away from us. You're now stuck on pavement unless you go to a park. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will reiterate, this is my driveway. It is, it is 697 feet from Lane Road to the Town Line of Raymond, to which we have no jurisdiction or control over what happens in the town of Raymond. It is my driveway. Thank you.
Nate Rockwell, Chester Road, still. I mountain bike, I've mountain biked all over Chester. I love Class 6 roads. I've never rode over that one because I didn't feel like it was polite going through his front yard. So, give him the road.
Okay, well, we have someone else here.
Hi, my name's Richard, Ledge Road. I believe I met you one day with my four-wheelers, my motorcycles. Before Ted bought that property, Mark Baker used to own that property. I talked to Mark Baker one day. He had no issues with us using his or Ledge Road extension, or as the old town people call it, Hooks Road. I believe there's a gravesite down back, there's the Raymond Town property down back. If you close this road, you are cutting off the access to the Raymond Town property because the Raymond Town property is down there. So, like this gentleman before me said, we are in a nice town here. If you ever hike through Chester, you will see a lot of Class 6 roads. That gives you access to a lot of property, town property, and I don't see why the need is to be, shut that road down to cut off other town property. Thank you.
So, I'm letting this gentleman, he speak more than once because he's petitioned for the article. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Hood, I do remember meeting you, in fact. You very impolitely drove down my driveway, and I caught you driving back. And what did I tell you? I told you you could happily access the driveway. Did I not give you permission to do so? I did.
Yes, I have not been back there because...
No, no, no. I don't recognize you, so you had a chance to come back up. I'm not trying to be a wise guy with you, but this person was ahead of you.
Karen Stage, Chester Street. I'm assuming that this discontinuance of the road has something to do with conservation easement, which allows recreational use of the property?
Okay, I've got to let him, and then you.
I have yet not drafted the conservation easement, but it will be taken into consideration, to answer your question.
So, this gentleman was ahead of you, Chris, sorry. I have to, okay, go ahead.
Chris Haddock. I just want to point out here, we're not being asked to discontinue a Class 6 road. We are being asked to discontinue a road that has already been discontinued. All we're being asked is to dot the i and cross the t.
Okay, so I don't see any further discussion, so we're voting on Article 30. All those in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Article 30 passes. Article 31, solar array. Okay. Shall the town authorize the select board to enter into a long-term option and lease agreement with Revision Energy, Inc., or its successors are assigned to lease a portion of town-owned property for the construction, installation, and operation of a solar array on such terms and conditions as determined by a select board, and to authorize select board to do any other actions necessary to carry out this vote? So, zero tax impact, there's three yeses with the select board, one no, and one abstention. Anyone want to move that article? Moved? Seconded. Thank you. Any discussion on that?
Robert Day, 52 Sheepwash Drive. I would like to call to table Article 31.
Okay, so it's a procedural, so it's been moved that we table that article, Article 31, and it's been seconded. All those in favor of tabling Article 31, please signify.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so I think the nays have it, so we're not going to table it. Okay, I'll do a hand count. All those in favor of tabling Article 31, please indicate. Okay, I'm just going to do a visual for right now. All those against tabling it. Yep, sorry, not tabled.
Okay, I know it's late, and we're all trying to get out of here, so I'll keep it crisp. Ted Broadwater, on Chester Street. So, I'm going to talk to you for just a couple of minutes about how we got to today. We are going to be talking about a solar array near the dump, so, go ahead, Deb, you can hit it. Just really briefly on history, last year, about the same time we were all together, and there were some really great questions, objections, concerns about the small solar array that was proposed behind this building, and that failed. I think it failed with good reason. So, the board of, or the select board, excuse me, decided to put together a small group of folks. They asked for volunteers. I think there's nine of us that volunteered to try to figure out if, per the mission, made any sense to have a solar array in Chester to specifically provide revenue and savings. So, we've been meeting every couple of weeks since May of last year, actually, maybe it was June, hundreds of hours into researching, talking to different companies, and I think, very importantly, we looked at every single piece of town-owned property to see if it was suitable for an array. And that wasn't just done by the volunteers, right? We got support from nonprofits, we got support from potential bidders, we learned from what other towns had done, there's many that have done this. We're not pioneers in this space, right? There's many solar arrays in municipalities around us. Actually, if you go back one, sorry. A real critical piece here is that we did put out a bid, right? So, we had the select board, approved by legal, put a bid out to 15 companies. So, we received those bids back, we analyzed those bids, we came together as a group through various public meetings and defined 12 different criteria to make a decision on the best bids, and what we came down to, go ahead, Deb. What we came down to was what you see here. We proposed to the select board in January what we thought was the best solution, right? Again, with revenue, savings, protection of the burn pile, honoring all setbacks as part of it. There's been a lot of discussion around, like, what the array would look like, and I want to be crystal clear that what you see here is just a mock-up. It's for visualization purposes only, right? This is something that Revision Solar put together for us, just to help people understand, roughly speaking, where the array might be. Some people pointed out, the original mock-up was way too far to the left and was treading on some things. We moved the mock-up to the right just to help alleviate that concern, but I want to be crystal clear that all setbacks have to be maintained, right? So, that's 75 feet for wetlands, 25 feet for boundaries. We were absolutely adamant with the bidders, they had to protect the burn pile and the compost pile. All those things are in there. Go ahead, Deb. So, there's benefits and risks. So, to walk through the benefits real quick, the rough estimate is about $2.5 million in revenue over 35 years. That is a long time for $2.5 million. So, want to be super clear, like, the lowest estimate that anybody could back up was about a million and a half. The high estimate was three. We chose that middle of the road, which was confirmed not only by the U.S. Energy Commission Expected Rates, but also Clean Energy of New Hampshire, which is a nonprofit. Clean Energy of New Hampshire, by the way, I'll plug them for a moment, super supportive, very helpful. They're actually helping 52 towns in New Hampshire right now, working on 72 arrays for municipalities. 25 of those are almost done, and of course, many of them are completely done and actually bringing savings back to neighboring towns. This is a no-cost option, and that's part of the reason why the money isn't huge, right? We're basically going to allow a company to put an array behind the dump. With no cost down, and with somebody else investing their million dollars, we're going to get only, let's say, $30,000 to $40,000 a year between the revenue and the savings. Go ahead, Deb. So, what does that mean? Roughly, it will estimate about 55% of the energy usage of all municipal buildings and about 35% of the bill. Just for context, we pay about $90,000 a year between all the different municipal buildings. So, as I mentioned, $30,000 to $40,000 a year coming off of that, 35%. Want to make sure, again, super clear on the burn pile and the compost, right? So, we've got those setbacks. We actually have manufacturers recommended setbacks for panels from the burn pile. We went conservative on that and actually went to 60 feet. Again, not going to affect activities there. Go ahead, Deb. Maintenance has been a hot topic. That was a really big question last year. Maintenance is included, right? So, plowing, panels fail, inverters fail, needs mowing, moose knocks down the fence, you know, whatever it is, that maintenance is covered. It's on them, right? And why do they need to do the maintenance? They want to keep it running, right? They want to make money off of it. Fully insured, and decommission is also a hot topic. I don't think we had an answer for that last year. The array owner is 100% responsible for decommissioning. We pressed for an estimate on what it would cost to decommission if the array owner went bankrupt, whatever it was, and the estimate was 15 grand. Part of the reason why it's low is it's steel and glass. Another question that came up last year that was of concern is, like, where's the stuff coming from? Right now, the panels are sourced in South Korea. The steel and switching gear, stuff like that, is either USA or Canada. Okay, and the last one here, installed by a local company, so Revision, who is the winning bidder, they've done many thousands of these arrays. They've done tons for lots of different companies, and most specifically in the municipality piece, right? They've supported Brentwood, Hooksit, Nashua, Boe, Exeter. And for those of you that either came to or watched the public meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, you heard the Brentwood guy talk about what a win it's been for Brentwood. So much of a win that they're actually figuring out how to come up with the money to buy the array so they can make more money off of it. Go ahead, Deb. Okay, so just a real basic concept here, what is net metering? Just to help folks understand, right, because we're theoretically going to have an array, right, that's a couple miles away from the buildings that are going to be using the electricity, basically, there's a meter in both places, right? You figure out how much power is going to be generated by the array there at the dump, and then you net that with the usage of the various town buildings, right? Simple netting there, but hope that helps. This is our forecast of revenue and savings. Again, it's revenue and savings. If you look at some of the stuff that's online, you look even in your book, you see it's revenue and savings. Revenue's tiny. It's like, you know, $3,000 to $5,000 a year, and that comes through a lease that we would give to the array owner and something called a payment in lieu of taxes. But those things are cash. It's cash coming to the town. The remaining of the forecasted amount is through savings, right, on energy? And if you want to hit the next slide, Deb. This is just, you know, looking back 20 years for New Hampshire in terms of electricity. This is where I make sure everybody understands nothing is risk-free. This is where I make sure everybody understands nothing is risk-free. You know, there are dips up here, right? There are periods of time when power goes a little bit cheaper, but over the long run, of course, it's going up and to the right, and that's what everybody forecasts. So, just to be crystal clear, there is a possibility that in a short period of time, right, energy rates get set every six months. It's possible that there's a six-month period out there where we could lose money, but in the long run, everybody has advised us, all the towns around us have said, like, this is likely a win. I think I may have one last slide. Okay. Brentwood Array, probably everybody's driven by it, right? It's really prominent there on the highway. Again, they've done well. I also have a rep from Revision that's here, there's Mark here, and he's here if folks have questions they want to list specifically to Reveal. What's that? Can you hear me?
He's coming, he's coming.
So do we need to have him?
No. I only offer up that Revision is here if people specifically have questions.
Okay. So I don't think that that's necessary. Sorry.
Saul Schreiber.
But a town person, it's necessary for a town person to talk, so go ahead.
Okay. Saul Schreiber, Jennifer Drive, Chester. I'm also part of this committee. Tonight, we've spent, we spent a lot of money. You know, it's money that had to be spent. Here we come before you with a proposal that costs us nothing to save some money. I tell you, if you told me that in 35 years I could get $2.5 million, I'd say, yeah, I'll take it, okay? As far as Brentwood, they're saving $7,000 a year, and they are in the process of voting for it, so, voting to buy it. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Ron McKinnon, Hanson Road, on the Budget Committee. We brought some questions before you when you brought this to us a month or so ago, and we'd never really got answers to them. One of them regards liability. You said there was liability during construction, but what about liability after construction? Those panels, within a foot when there's an array, will put off 8,000 degrees of heat. Some little kid goes in there and torches himself up pretty good on his hand. Who's covering that liability? Is that the town? Is that direct energy or whatever the revision energy? And the second one was, we can't sign a contract without an escape clause, and we were never seen an escape clause in writing where if next week we decide, because we had a liability case, that we don't want this anymore, how do we get out of this? Those questions were never answered, and I think we deserve an answer before we vote on any of this.
Thanks for the questions, Ron. So hopefully I don't miss any of them. The first one was liability. So liability insurance is covered for the life of the lease, right? Revision slash the array owner, right? They have to cover the entire array for the life of the lease, right? So I'm sorry you didn't get that feedback that we had sent out, but it is 100% covered for the life of the lease. I think your second question was about heat. Somebody's welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, maybe that's Mark. These do not give off heat.
Escape clause.
Escape clause, thank you. So there's actually three outs in the contract, and so just to be super clear, right, all this warrant article is doing is allowing the town to engage with Revision. It's not forcing a specific contract, it's not forcing anything other than allowing the town to engage. After that point, we've already seen a mock, I shouldn't say a mock, an example contract, right? Our legal team has actually already looked at that, and it does have escape clauses. In fact, there's three off-roads built into the contract. One of those is including a 120-day out clause. Did I get them all?
Has the town council seen that contract?
Yes, sir.
Steve Realheart doesn't run drive. I've done solar for a long time, built solar cars, had a good time with it. It's fun. This is New England, we don't get a lot of sun, not compared to the South, but my real questions are really pertaining to the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission. The end of this month, they're making a lot of move on the net energy metering. Net energy metering as we know it could go away the end of this month. We're in what's called NEM 2.0, we're about to move to NEM 3.0, things change a lot. If the current legislation changes and the net metering goes away, we get, the only benefit we then get, I believe, is the difference in price that we're going to pay Revision versus the price that we pay whoever our company is for the time. Currently, we're paying less, right? If we look at Evrosource, 8.3 cents a kilowatt hour versus 10.5. Obviously, prices go up, they always end up going up, could be long-term. My other comment is, on your slide about how much we look to save, I think the contract you were talking about is a 25-year contract for a million dollars. Then there's a presumption of purchasing, that we purchased the array to get that nice knee for the last 10 years. Just something to be aware of when you're looking at that. It's really a 25-year contract for a million dollars.
Yeah, great question. I don't know if you want to flip back Deb to that rev slide. One more. Yeah, so the group together thought that the best thing to present was the be-rid-of-outlook, right? So this starts out as a 25-year contract, and we can ride that contract for 25 years and then renew it. We can actually buy this thing out if we wanted to at year six. So starting after year six, if the town got together and voted for it, we could, like Brentwood and some of the other towns are doing, go ahead and buy that contract out if the economics made sense and we thought we'd save even more money, right? So it's like, buy out at year six or ride it till 25 and renegotiate. This spike that you see, well said, right, is indeed based on, we are going to let it ride for 25 years, and then by that time, the buy-out price of the array is, somebody's going to correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was like $75,000, but please, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, it was under $100,000 at that point to buy it out. So we conservatively estimated, hey, that would make sense to forecast at that point. Did I answer all those questions? Did I get everything?
Yeah, the other one was just to make sure you guys were aware that the commission, New Hampshire Commission is, there's been an open case for the last two years, so it's been hot and bothered both ways.
Great question. So, one of the FAQs that we put out there was the why now, right? Because we get that question a lot. And specifically on that point, right, we just don't know what the legislation is going to do, so if we can lock in earlier than later, we're protected, right? The landscape may shift in the future.
But only if you have that locked in with your energy provider before the NEM changes.
So the contract that we would get, right, would, basically, you're going to pay 10.9 with a 2% escalator for 25 years, period.
Sorry, the part I'm talking about is the net metering. If the net metering changes before you have the array online, you might not be getting the transmission credits, which are going to be 40-something percent of the benefit.
So that's one of the off-roads from the contract, right? So, yeah.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah.
Sabrina Harris, Crawford Road. So, in this, there are a few assumptions that I have questions on. One of them is the escalator that you started to speak to. There's also a reduction in efficiency, and my understanding is that at a certain point, that drops to about 85% later on in the timeframe. This also assumes that at a 25-year, we want to buy a 25-year-old solar array. What happens to this diagram if we never buy the solar array?
So the contract, let me just answer your last question first. The contract comes with a guarantee of decommission. So if at 25 years we say, we're done, thank you very much, take it down, that's what we do, and that stuff goes away, so you don't save that money. On the panels efficiency piece, you're absolutely correct, so the panels lose about 1/2 of a percent a year. So you do that math, and they do go down to about 85% efficiency over the life of the panels. Panels are warranted for 25 years. So all of that efficiency degradation is actually baked into these numbers, right? So this is not based on, hey, if they magically stay at 100% for 25 years, this includes the slow degradation of the panels.
So if warranty is only until 25 years, is that signaling that they expect that at that point, they wouldn't necessarily give us that additional revenue years?
That's not the expectation, and in fact, there's solar arrays out there that have been grid-tied since 1980 that are still functioning.
And then my last question, is there any off-road if there's changes in technology that dramatically improve our ability to generate solar from newer technology?
Yeah, that's always the question, right? And that's part of the why now. That's another piece of it, right? The technology improves, but when you figure, if you waited five years, that's about $162,000 in revenue and savings that you would have missed out on. The speed at which technology improves is not that fast. It absolutely is improving. To answer the other part of your question, we could absolutely trade out the panels, right? So if they have panels producing, let's say, 400 watts, and in 10 years they produce 800 watts, if the economics made sense, you'd trade out the panels to get more money.
Would that be a new contract that we'd be locked into?
I don't think it's like a cellphone plan where it's like you re-up, but I might invite Mark to answer that question, because I don't know how that one works.
Thank you for your answers.
Absolutely.
I'm going to recognize Colin, he's been patiently waiting here, so we'll have him next.
Colin Costin, Halls Village Road. Deb, could you please do up the revised mock-up slide? I like solar. I built, I designed and built my own solar system, an active air system, for heating my house back in 1979, and it worked great. The selectmen came to evaluate it for the assessment, and they told me it was working better than the commercial units, and it blasted us out of the house when it was 10 degrees out, so long as the sun was shining. And a couple of years ago, I decided that solar had developed to the point where it's now worth me putting my money into, and so I contracted with Sean Carlson, my neighbor, who is the next one up to the mic over there, and I had a system put on my house which supplies me with 115% of my power. And my site is such that the array faces almost due south, it's on a steep roof, and there's virtually no shade available to it except for very late in the day. So I have an optimal site for my collection system and my solar system, and it's been working great, and I'm very happy with it. With this site, I'm not so happy with this site at the transfer station, however. The, no, not that one, the one you were showing earlier, the latest one, if you would, yeah, that one's good. The first is, I see along this table here beside me, a bunch of people that are very strongly pro-solar, and I think they're going to do anything they can to make this work. And I have concerns that there'll be encroachment, even though there's not supposed to be. Ted ensures us there won't be, but there could be encroachment on the yard waste and brush pile area, because this area, it's not, a lot of the time, it's not used to anywhere near its fullest potential, but there are times when the whole area is needed. And to get the big trucks and the loader in to load up the yard waste, all of that space is needed, and the selectmen have to try to make sure that it stays that way. Another concern that I have is shade. Going down the left side, all the trees on the parcel can be cut, but over on the other side of the stone wall, on the abutters side of the stone wall, there's a row of big, tall pine trees and various other trees that are going to be putting a lot of shade onto those collectors at any time outside of midday. And then over on the right, you get into the setback from the wetlands, and a lot of trees can be cut over on the right, but Table 2 in the specs for the zoning specifies that within 25 feet of the wetland, you can only cut 50% of the trees per year. So these trees are going to be staying with us for some time until we get rid of the big ones, but there'll always be new ones growing up here, so there's going to be, this array is going to be taking a lot of shade. So those are the concerns that I have with it. I hope that they could be overcome, but it wasn't time for me to put my array in until it had every chance of being highly efficient, and when you drive down the road and you see these solar collector systems on both sides of a gable roof, how much are you getting? Only one of those is working for you. If you have them on both sides, they're not both working for you. You paid to get it put up there, but it's really cutting into your return. So you have to, in order to get good return on a solar system, you've got to have the right conditions. Thank you.
So I'm going to limit discussion to these last three gentlemen, and you can respond at any time, but these three gentlemen are the last to speak on this warrant article. Thank you.
Do you mind if I answer Colin's questions, or?
What was that?
Do you mind if I answer Colin's questions?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay. Is that cool? All right. So, thanks Colin. I just want to emphasize again, this is just a depiction for visualization, right? The actual array that, if the town approves it and the contract negotiations work, would be subject to survey, all setbacks, protection of the burn pile and the compost pile. The final array may end up being a little bit bigger, or it could end up being a little bit smaller. If it can be a little bit bigger, that's more savings, if it's a little smaller, that's a little less, right? So all those things get considered, and Colin, the setback, I think for the wetlands, actually 75 feet, and that was part of the setup. 75, yeah.
Sean Carlson, Halls Village Road in Chester. So I wanted to speak on this. I think the Solar Working Group has put in a fantastic proposal here, and definitely selected the right company as far as doing this project. I also have concerns, being a resident of Chester. I purchased my wife's family home, they've been here for 25 years. We plan to stay here till my kids are old enough, and, you know, I don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon. The equipment that's out there today has a 25-year warranty on the equipment, so a projection beyond that point, I feel, is a bad decision, so going to that 35-year standpoint. The equipment, I've been in the industry now for about nine years. I started working with residential panels, we mostly work with residential. Also, so you know, I am the owner of 603 Solar. So also, we started at about 250-watt panels, we're now using about a 425-watt panel in the matter of eight years. So the technology is increasing. That's not to say that there's ever a good time or a bad time to invest in one of these projects. The other fear is the maintenance aspect. I know that you said that it is in the contract that Revision is handling that for anything that is related to the maintenance of the system. However, over time, there are defects that do happen, and it needs to be replaced. That replacement cost at some time is not going to be necessarily covered, and I do feel that it could be an expense. That kind of takes out the fact for the option for the town to purchase the system and own it outright, because the fear of that expense at some point down the road could be drastic. We have helped several communities do a ownership model, where they have come up with a specific site that does follow the efficiencies that Colin was talking about. So looking at those sites that are perfect exposures that can capture the best portions of efficiency. There's many, you know, exposures that we have in town that can directly offset those usages, and I think looking into have in town that can directly offset those usages, and I think looking into those is certainly not a bad idea. And I know that the Solar Working Group has tried this option before, and it didn't really go anywhere with the town, which is a shame to see. At the end of the day, you know, I think that, you know, this large of an undertaking, especially with the sections that we're talking about looking at, you know, can definitely just kind of be a shock to a lot of the people in town. And I think the removal costs that you projected, which I believe was 15,000, I feel that that is very much of an undershoot for removal of the equipment. I know that we have been asked several times from, you know, this is obviously on a much smaller scale with residential homes, about removing equipment, and it's not so much the cost of removing it, it's where does it go? And that's the concern that I feel with this. At the end of the day, I am all for solar, all for supporting it, and would love to help the Solar Working Group, because I do believe that the town, and any town, should invest in the opportunity that solar has to present. But this particular option, I feel, is not the right one. Thank you.
Hi, Saul Schreiber, Jennifer Drive. I just want to mention that, at the very beginning, we sent out PPAs to a lot of different companies, including 603. They didn't come to the plate. We have revision that did come to the plate, and they did their due diligence to talk about the shade, all these figures that we're talking about, warranties, all these things that were included in our contract with them. So I think I'd like to have Mark come up and speak. Is that okay? Is that out of protocol?
No, it's not okay.
Okay, it's okay.
I've, I've made my decision, unless someone wants to overrule me. I've decided, you're the last one, sir, to speak on this.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep.
Rick of Karsek, Shetland Road. Do we know the overall value that this array will put out each year, total? Not just what we get, but what the total value is that this array will put out per year?
You don't have to answer. So this is, here's the one problem you have at a town meeting. You can ask all the questions you want, but no one has to answer them.
Yeah, I'd like to try to answer.
Sorry.
That's your choice.
It's, it's a little bit of an impossible question, right? Because this solar array, we don't know exactly the size of it, right? The only thing this warrant article is doing is allowing the town to engage with revision, right?
Okay.
So the final size, we don't know. The other thing is that the way that the power is purchased is dynamic, right? And so I'll give you an example. I actually toured the hydroelectric dam in Manchester the other day. Creates 17.6 megawatts at any given time. Sometimes they have to sell that power for zero, and sometimes they sell it at 15 cents. It's, it's like a commodities market, so I can't really tell you, like, the total value of the output over time.
Okay, thank you. What you showed us on the slide, you had some pretty good numbers. So you know numbers. What I'm seeing is, you want us to give up town property for somebody to make more money than what we're getting. We're getting breadcrumbs from this whole deal. This would be like if I had somebody come up and offer to rent my house for $2,000 a month, and I think it's a great deal. But they go ahead and sublet it for $20,000 a month. Is it such a great deal? No, it's not. Also, you had the picture up there of the Brentwood Array. Maybe it's just me, but I don't know anybody who thinks that that array is pretty or beautiful. I don't either, right? Now, I am not anti-solar. I'm not anti-hydrogen, you know, alternatives, right? I'm not. However, we've been through this many, many times, and I feel that as a town, giving up town property for somebody else to make much more money than what we're going to make, and we're going to save, don't be fooled. Don't be fooled, people. Also, the people who like to go down Class 6 roads and love the beauty of Chester, go through the Forsyth Forest on the, on the, on the walkway, now you're thinking, let's go ahead and strip that land, clear-cut it, raise the temperature around that area, take away the habitat, take away the cooling, take away the oxygenation that's being developed by those trees in that area, for breadcrumbs. Breadcrumbs. Just think about this, people. Do we want to give up town property for others to make so much money off of us, to make fools out of us? I suggest we vote no. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, I'm sorry, but I, you can move to overrule me? Are you moving to overrule me? Because I've limited. You are, okay. So someone wants to second him? Okay, all in favor of overruling me and allowing more people to speak until we run out of people? All those in favor?
No.
Any opposed?
No.
I think the noes have it. They're not, I have a responsibility to the people here. There's other warrant articles still to take up. So, we're in warrant article 31, SO Array, as read. All those in favor, please signify.
No.
All opposed?
No.
Noes have it. Article 31 fails. Article 32, post office lease. Pardon me? You can't call for a count. I mean, I just took, I took a voice vote, and everyone's leaving. If you, no, if you disagree with me, you can just move to me. But I'm pretty confident in the voice vote told me that it was in, an overruling.
Motion to take a motion.
Anyone's welcome. Yep, go ahead.
I just want to make a motion that we do a hand count.
You, you, okay. Has there been a motion for a hand count? People are walking out. I, I don't know if it's...
No.
Okay, all those in favor of a hand count, please signify.
No.
All those against it?
No.
Sorry. Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to restrict reconsideration of that article.
Okay. There's been a motion to restrict reconsideration of Article 31, and seconded. All those in favor?
No.
Any opposed?
No.
Oyes have it. There's been a motion to restrict reconsideration of Article 36. Seconded. All those in favor of doing that?
No.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, oyes have it. We're now at Article 32, post office lease. Special warrant article. Shall the town authorize the select board to enter into a five-year lease with two five-year renewable options with the United States Postal Service for 1,862 square feet on the first floor of the Ruth Ray Building? With appropriate curtilage on such terms and conditions as the select board determines are in the best interest of the town, further to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,200 to pay a one-time brokerage commission fee to the United States Postal Service's broker. Majority vote required. One cent tax impact, four yeses and one no from the select board, eight yeses and zero nos from the budget committee. Someone want to bring that to the floor?
So moved.
Moved, seconded?
Seconded.
It's seconded. Any, any discussion on that one?
Let me talk a little bit about this, this warrant article. It is the United States Postal Services hired a, a property management company to, real estate investment company to, to manage the leasing of all the post offices in the United States. However, for some reason, they are having us pay the $5,000 fee for their, their services that they're using. And it's up to us to decide whether we want to do that. I don't know why they're doing that. I assume that they have the same requirement that we do, that in order for us to spend any money, we have to do an appropriation, and that's why it's in front of you right now.
Okay. Rhonda, go ahead, Rhonda.
Rhonda Lamphier, Fremont Road. So during your negotiation, once you found out that you had to pay a broker's fee of $5,200, did you raise the amount of rent that would be charged to cover that fee?
Yes.
So we're going to get $5,200 more a year?
Yes, it's, yes. No, it's, it's, it's not annually. It's a one-time fee.
It's a one-time fee?
It is a one-time fee, yes.
But did you raise the monthly rate to cover that $5,200?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Next.
Robert Day, 52 Sheepwash Drive. Congratulations for getting that money. That was a great job. However, it should have been unnecessary. JLL is the one who's responsible, and they actually have a set, setup, they took over from the previous company that was fired for fraud. You can check that out, and you'll see that I'm right. Now, I'm going to read to you. And no such commission will be paid to either broker when the tenant is already in place, and the transaction is merely a re-lease renewal. Wow. The one who, the one and only one in this who's supposed to pay anything is supposed to be the US Postal Service. It's always the way it's been. There are people in this town who own properties that lease them to the US Postal Service. None of them ever pay a commission. Ever. It's paid by the US Postal Service, because they have a guaranteed contract. It is them and only them. It is like if you went out and you tried to get, you wanted to buy a house, and you got a salesperson, and you paid them directly. The person you're buying the house from now doesn't pay them a commission. They're working strictly for you. That's the way it's supposed to be. That's the way it works all around the country. But I do applaud you for not falling for that scam. But that's what it was. And that's why the previous company, the JLL, was fired for fraud. So who is it on this panel here who was smart enough to think of that and to add the price in, so we didn't get taken like that?
Today.
Yes.
The negotiations that occurred just recently, in fact, in the last 10 days, and I spoke with them directly.
Who did you speak to?
The, I can't give you the gentleman's name, but if you want afterwards, I will give you his phone number.
Oh, yeah, I would, I would love that. I'd love to speak to him.
Because he called me, and we had a discussion about it. We are going to raise the, in the five years, the first year, we're going to raise the rent to collect the $5,200.
I understand that, and applauded you for that.
No, no, no problem. You don't have to applaud me. I'm looking for the best deal for the town.
Sure.
We will then collect that $5,200 each year for the next four years. And if we consider in continuing the lease, okay, as it says here, that will have to come up in five years again to the town, to the legislative body. Because one of the things, one of the requirements, as I understand it, and Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, is we are not, we are not able to obligate future boards or future legislate, legislative bodies without the approval. So we're doing this now because our, their lease is up, and, or will be up, and then we'll handle it again in five years. This will be a reoccurring thing.
Understood. But as I said, this is quote, "Alessor has no legal obligation to pay a commission to JLL." That's the people you should be dealing with. Jones, Lang, and LaSalle. They have a contract with the United States Postal Service. Yeah. But they can always ask. But if you said to them, "No, we're not paying you a commission," nothing would happen. That's what I'm telling you. So in the future, never fall for that, because you don't have to pay them a commission. It's in the contract. If you read, I can get it for you if you'd like, with the US Postal Service. They have a guaranteed contract, and only the USPS pays, never the person who's renting. And I know people, you do too, probably, in this town who own postal properties that they rent out. They never pay, they never pay a commission. It's absurd on its face.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
No, they have been asking us for quite some time since this came about, and you can thank our town administrator, because she keeps on telling them, "No, we're not doing that, and we're not doing it until it comes up, you know, to the town vote to even increase the lease, or to, you know, to make the five years." And then, as I said, because I had dealt with it before, bingo, all of a sudden, somebody called me on my cellphone, and I sat there, and I said, "What are you talking about?"
It's absurd, yeah.
And he said, "Do you have any problems?" And I said, "Sure do. You know, this, this building has been a post office for about 180 years. And, you know, we're not about to change things."
Yeah, yeah. Very good. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for bringing it up.
Sabrina Harris, Crawford Road. I just am a little bit confused with the back and forth that was going on. So with this warrant article, if we were to vote no, what would the consequences be of a no vote?
Basically, the consequence would be, we don't have the capability of giving them a lease. They want a five-year lease, okay? And they've been getting, we've been giving them five-year leases for a good number of years, because that way they can handle it. It will go up as the years go on. There are clauses there for it to go up. But the other problem is, is we have two. One, they could find another place in town to put a post office and have someone build it for profit. Or, as they've done already, they can eliminate the Chester post office and just have everything go down to Derry, or eventually go into Manchester. Because it's what's happening. You know, the post office, having worked for the federal government, the post office is not exactly doing wonderful. And, you know, there, if you read the papers and everything about it, they're, you know, so they'll consolidate, probably.
Thank you.
No problem.
Chuck Boyer, 576 Fremont Road. We, we collect rent from the government on this property?
Yes, yes. We have several properties in town that we collect rent on.
The simple question here for me is, why do we need to take a tax hit on $5,200? Even though it's not a lot of money, why doesn't that rent pay for the $5,200?
It's going to.
Well, then, why do we need it to be a tax hit? It says, it's, I mean, I realize it's only a penny, but pennies add up.
Yes, the reason why is because we have to appropriate the money before we can pay it out. We have an appropriation requirement.
Well, it still doesn't make sense to me. Why, if we have revenue coming in that could cover the $5,200, I mean, making an appropriation doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a tax hit.
Because the board of selectmen can't spend revenue unless there's an appropriation. So we have to appropriate and agree to spend the money in the town meeting in order for us to spend the money.
And we spend it upfront.
And we spend it upfront.
Well, I'm not sure I, I get that. But, I mean, it is only a penny, so it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, there does not appear to be further discussion on Article 32. All in favor of Article 32, please indicate.
No.
Any opposed? Article 32 passes. Article 33, Establishment Funding of Bridge Repair and Replacement CRF. Special warrant article. Shall the town establish a bridge repair and replacement capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 351, Roman numeral 2, for the purpose of funding the repair or replacement of bridges in the town of Chester, which have been determined to be structurally deficient? Further, to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 to be placed in this fund, and to authorize the transfer of $200,000 from the June 30, 2024 unassigned fund balance for this purpose, with no amount to be raised from taxation. Further, to make the select board as agents to expend. Majority vote? No tax impact, five yeses, zero noes, zeros of abstentions by the select board, seven yeses, zero noes, one abstention from the budget committee. If someone could please bring that to the floor.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Great, excellent, okay. Any discussion on Article 33?
I'll speak on it.
Okay, go ahead.
In town, we have a couple of red-listed bridges, which we need to repair in the future. The state has come down, evaluated it, and one of the bridges in particular, they're looking to, and Andrew, you can probably give some more detail on it, but within about three or four years, they're looking to replace the bridge. We have a grant set up for one of the bridges for 80%, and we need to match 20%. What we want to do is be able to raise money, to be able to have the money available when they come to us and say they're ready to build that bridge. If we don't have the money available, they'll move on to the next. If we don't have the money available, they'll move on to the next town that has a bridge ready to go. We have already put the monies aside and are under contract with one of the consultants to do the engineering. They've done some test pourings already so far. So what we're trying to do is get the jump on this so that we have the money available in a few years to be able to completely fund that, or 20%, without any additional taxation, except the grant.
Andrew Hatt, Augusta Street. Have to have us fund this, our share in place, when our turn comes up on the list. We only have one bite at the apple. If we lose it, we go to the bottom of the list. And the list is very long of towns in New Hampshire that need bridges replaced. At some point, that both of these red-listed bridges, if nothing is done, are gonna pass the point where DOT will allow traffic to go over them, and you'll end up with Jersey barriers preventing traffic from crossing. I can't imagine the number of residents that would be inconvenienced by that happening on the Hanson Road Bridge to 102. Probably survived the Shepherd Home Road Bridge, there are some detours that could be done around that, but the Hanson Road Bridge would really cause inconvenient detours. And we really need to do this. And when I started on this, putting this in the CIP, the price was, I think it was like $1.4 million? Well, now it's 2.1 plus.
1.7, isn't it?
Well, I think by the time our turn comes up, with what the government keeps piling on as far as climate hardening requirements, it may go. So we need to save for this. This is really important to the people who commute to work. Thank you.
And that's just the one bridge. There's two bridges. The first one that we have the grant for is for estimated now $1.7 million, and so we need to come up with a little over $400,000 before they're ready to build it.
Chris Stages, Chester Street. Just a point of clarification. What bridges are we talking about?
We're talking about, there are two bridges. One is Hanson Road, and it's right at the intersection of 102 where Hanson comes in. And the other one is Old Shepherd Home, Shepherd Home Bridge, about, yeah, on the same road almost, up about an hour, half mile or a mile further. So both of those have been deemed that they're starting to deteriorate to a point where they need to be repaired and replaced.
My interest was piqued when I heard the number 102. I said, ding, 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 maybe that's a state's problem. If it's on 102.
Yeah. It is not a state, it is a town bridge. And we've already approached that to try to get the state to fund it, but no.
Well, you can always hope.
And we would like to see the Hanson Road one done first, right by 102, because that really is the main access point from that southern area. And if that gets shut down, it's a significant area, a significant travel zone to get back onto 102 from that area.
I checked into the right-of-way, and that Hanson Road Bridge is not in the Route 102 right-of-way. As wide as it is in places, as much as the state has taken along 102, for some reason, they didn't want to take that bridge.
Go ahead.
Chuck Boyer, 576...
But they will give us 80% of it, so that's good.
576 Fremont Road. I totally get the bridge replacement, but here you've made an appropriation of $200,000, right? And there's no tax impact because you funded it from one of the funds, the unreserved or whatever. So why couldn't you have done the same thing on the Article 32? And not... Again, it's only a penny, but I don't get it. You know, why keep... We're getting hit so badly with so many things. I'm just like, why?
You may have been able to do that, but the second part of that lease that we couldn't do is that we still have to get permission from you all to be able to do a multi-year lease. And right now, we can only do one-year leases, selectmen, but we have to come to the town legislative body to get it for the five years.
Well, you would still have our permission.
Yeah.
We would have approved it. It's just that the $5,200 would have come from the Capital Reserve Fund or one of those funds, Ron.
Yeah. It's not there. I mean, if somebody wanted to make a motion to amend it, they could do that.
Well...
Okay. So we're on Article 33. All those in favor as read, please signify.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 33 passes. Article 34, Elderly Tax Exemption Modification. Shall the town modify the elderly resident property tax exemption amounts pursuant to RSA 7239-A due to the increased assessment reevaluation that is being completed for the 2025 tax year? The elderly exemptions based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers shall change as follows. For persons 65 years of age up to 75 years...
Oh, and then 40.
Okay. From 110,000 to 154,000. For persons 75 years of age up to 80 years, from 140,000 to 196,000. And for persons 80 years of age or older, from 170,000 to 238,000. That... Those are the ranges. And then we go to the next page, and it says, "To qualify, the person must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least five years, owned the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such a person's spouse, they must have been married for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $40,000, or if married, a combined net income of less than $60,000, and own net assets not in excess of $300,000, including the value of the person's residence." Majority vote. Tax impact zero. Tally vote, five yeses from the selectmen, zero nos and zero abstentions. So move that to the floor? Seconded?
Seconded.
Okay. So any discussion on Article 34?
James.
Okay. There appearing to be none? All those in favor of Article 34 as read, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 34 passes. Article 35, Disabled Blind Tax Exemptions Modification. Shall the town modify the disabled and blind resident property tax exemption amounts pursuant to RSA 7237 and RSA 7237-B due to the increased assessment reevaluation that is being completed for the 2025 tax year? The disabled and blind exemptions based on assessed value for qualified taxpayer shall change as follows. For a disabled person, from 110,000 to 154,000. And for a blind person, from 30,000 to 42,000. To qualify for the disabled exemption, the person must be eligible under the Federal Social Security Act for benefits for the disabled, have been a New Hampshire resident for at least five years, owned the real estate individually or jointly, or if the real estate is owned by such a person's spouse, they must have been married for at least five consecutive years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $40,000, or if married, a combined net income of less than $60,000, and own net assets not in excess of $300,000, including the value of the person's residence. To qualify for the blind exemption, the resident must be legally blind as determined by the Administrator of Blind Services of the Vocational Rehabilitation Division of the Department of Education. There's no income and asset threshold to receive the blind exemption. Majority vote required, and this impact is zero tax impact, five yeses, zero noes, zero abstentions by the board, select board. Any discussion on that? There appearing to be none? All those in favor of Article 35, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Article 35 passes. And we're now moving over to Article 40, which I'm gonna declare as tabled. It's good, it's by its own language, tabled.
You didn't move the article. The article wasn't moved.
Which one?
The blind.
Okay, so I thought I did move to Article... We're gonna do this... We've already read it. So Article 35, moved?
Moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 35 passes. And then 40 is by its own terminology because Articles 37, 38, and 39 were tabled.
Seconded.
It's tabled. So it's a motion to table, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Article 41, Reports. To hear reports of agents, auditors, and committees of office heretofore chosen and pass any vote related heretofore to transact any other business that may legally come before the town. Is there anything of value for you to see, business to come before us?
Before the town, I would like a request for the planning board, when they put out the descriptions of the various...
Amendments?
Amendments, will they please give us more information?
Okay. So let's have a straw vote on this. Who votes that for the next election, all amendments to zoning articles, that the information be provided on-site at the election place so that people can look at the section that's being amended? I think that's what you're saying, Charlotte, right?
Yes, I think that we could actually put it before that, put it on to the website.
Okay.
Maybe...
Websites, it's up to you how you want to propose this.
Just that the people be able to get it. I'd like to have it to people performing it there.
So everyone's heard that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the selectmen have a straw vote, and it's up to the selectmen and the moderator, who is no longer me. And so, any other business?
Just like to revisit the motion from before. I know we all want to get out of here, but I'd just like to make a motion to strongly urge the select board to pay all members of the Chester Fire Department in accordance with Article 4 of the Chester Fire Department Regulations. This is simply asking them to follow the policy that is written and pay accordingly.
Okay. So it's been seconded, all in favor of the straw vote, all in favor of encouraging the selectmen to do that?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. Well, hey, look at, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a nice night, everyone. Thank you.